Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight, Thursday, January 2nd, our regularly scheduled Board of Selectments meeting. I wish you all please stand for the pendulum. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'm not going to ask for the Tom Inger to have you move anything up on the agenda. Mike said he's here for the night. I will just quickly let... We do have someone that came here underneath public comment. I probably should have had it... I didn't know about this, right? I would have had it added to the agenda, but I think it looks like she might want to have a little bit more time, so...
Well, I'll make a reading story.
Okay. All right. So we'll call you under public comment, and then I think John might want to add something, and the Gail as well.
Okay. Okay. This next section is public comment. This section of the agenda is reserved for people in attendance who wish to briefly address the Board of Selectment. The Board requests that comments be limited to three minutes or less. People wishing to address the Board regarding agenda items should request clarification from the Chair as to whether or not they should speak during the public comment section or during the actual time that the item is being discussed. So with that, if someone is speaking for public comment, would you please give your name and address?
Okay, if you'd like to stand.
You don't have to.
Okay. My name is Michelle Sinquez. I've been a resident of Hebron for 15 years. I'm on the Hebron Green Committee. I am the Green Garden Gang gal. And up until this September, I've been alone. And but now I have gang sort of form.
Yep, I just put it on my phone.
I should mention that I am an artist. I'm a gardener, and I'm a nature lover. So this past August, I went to Glastonbury to a program called the Sustainability Fest. And it was at that program that they gave a presentation on the pollinator gardens. I'm hoping that I don't have to mention to everybody the state of our pollinators. Our bees are on decline. A lot of butterflies are on decline. There's a whole problem with the ecosystem and diversity. So I came home from that program, and I looked at my garden, and I said, "As an artist, I have done a great job as far as designing for color, texture, and so on, but it occurred to me that I had completely ignored the teeming life force that was in that garden." And I thought, "My goodness. These are my nearest and dearest neighbors. These are my bugs. And so I should pay attention to the bugs." When I came home, I went to the library to speak to Kevin because I had worked with him before in redesigning the center island of the library. And with this new passion, I went to him again, saying, "Can we create a demonstration pollinator garden to the side of the library?" And he was all for it, and we have started to work on that. Being emboldened by his enthusiasm, I went to Rich Palarko and said, "Rich, I have this great idea about the pollinator pathway, and he says, 'I'm all on board for it.'" So I was thrilled, and he said, "We actually have three sites available: the two green areas abutting the parking lot on Church Street and the area at Kenny Road." And so I went to Kenny Road, and I did a lot of dumpster diving at Ace Hardware and collected 9,000 square feet of cardboard. And a few of us did what they call sheet mulching. We put it down, we put the mulch on top, and so it's all percolating. So come spring, we're ready for planting. I'm in the process of designing with Rich native plantings in front of the Old Town Hall. Natives are... Native perennials are of particular importance to the bees. So the idea is there'll be people sitting at these lovely Adirondack chairs with all these beautiful flowers and the monarch butterflies, and it will be quite an enhancement to our central town. So that is all well and good, I'm thinking, for the small scale. And it was through the word of mouth, actually, that this has grown somewhat, where my physical therapist says, "I'm all on board. Let's do something different in the front of my office." Jess at Something Simple said, "We're redesigning the back of her property for parking lots." She says, "Let's do it." Judy Padell, a resident in town, has this huge weed-infested area. She said, "Let's turn it into a meadow." So there's plenty of interest, and it's going to grow what I consider organically, as I've heard it has, because it has traveled so far from Wilton all the way through the Hudson and Husetonic Valleys. But nothing has been happening significantly here. So what I'm doing tonight is asking the Board and looking for support because I don't know how to get the resources that we might need for either funding through grants or just to create the steering committee of people that are interested, whether it be from the churches, from businesses, from residents, municipal groups, conservation groups, et cetera, to get together and see how we could do this, not just on these few incidences. But the idea is to create larger and larger areas so that you're creating a corridor because the bees can't go past a half a mile before they conk out and they don't get the nutrients. So I don't know where to go. I need advertising funding. You want to have about three or four significant guest speakers at the library. There's a marvelous film. We have to get the word out to the town. There's very little cost once it gets going because the residents themselves start to do the planting. They buy the plants, they learn how to plant it, and it works on its own. So any help we could get would be appreciated. And I'll just close with a quote from Congresswoman Shirley Shism, who said, "Service is the rent we have to pay for the privilege of living on the earth."
Good job. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Just so happened, I got my wife a butterfly house for Christmas. It's all about butterflies. And fun fact, they only live in butterfly form for 17 days. And they like milkweed, so our garden is now going to be all milkweed.
Actually, off the Nile, as you go down the hill to 207, at one time, that whole field off on the right-hand side was all milkweed.
Really?
Yeah. There are a lot of areas. It would be nice to go further, see exactly what would be involved, you know, to try to ascertain and get some of the specifics down.
Yeah, that's why the group, it takes a group. A few of us have a significant background in how it works, but we need input from everywhere. So yeah, it was fun because I took a walk on that new trail. And I know Nate Bar... Mark Barable does a lot of hanging, but I found these two little pristine spots that are too small for hanging. And we both said, "This looks like a meadow for pollinators." So you want to have a site that's significantly large so that the pollinators can find it, or you want multiple small little places, even if it's your little household garden. And ideally, we want to eliminate some of these massive lawns, which serve no purpose other than to make you look like you're greener than your next home.
Keep in touch, and we'll see what can be done.
There's a lot... I mean, we have a lot of land, obviously, that's wetland. So it should be managed more effectively.
I was going to say, Rich did just become a forester. And one of the things for that person is to try to figure out how best to manage and get the land where it should be.
Then Michelle did come and see me, I don't know, a couple months ago now. And I did put her together with Rich and the Parks and Rec Commission to work through them with the town properties because that will be the person that would give the... So they're working on that, I think, right?
Yes, yes, yes. We're due to have another meeting about the Old Town Hall site and just in general. But ideally, we want it more than just things.
Then you would be updating us as to the progress of what's already been started in terms of thinking about maybe what would be next steps for us, if anything?
I would ask Michelle to come back and do that along with Rich, but absolutely, I think you guys would want to hear it more from them than me.
So from our perspective, we're looking forward to an update from Rich?
Yeah, because I look at Michelle, and Michelle, I don't think anybody's giving you any red flags. I think everybody you've spoken to, including me, are all for this.
Right. I don't know if there's other commissions that it would be best that I bring to myself or to our group, you know, like the conservation people.
She's a member... Yeah, she's a member of the Green Committee. Yeah, unless I'm wrong, she's a member of the Green Committee, so it's there. And then I put her in touch with Rich to have the access to the town properties, which is the format we have in place. But I don't have a problem mentioning it to the other committees, Conservation.
Anybody pertaining to land, open space, land use, and...
Sure. It's a good thing.
Okay.
Thank you.
If there's no other public comment.
Any other public comment? Okay.
All right. Under this portion of the agenda is a good-to-know, Hebron Business Ballet and Public Service Announcements. And tonight, I am very pleased to ask the AHM representatives to come up. Hey, Donna, make sure Adam moves that camera when the president... If you could ask him. You can set your stuff down here. That's... Then you can introduce your cohorts.
Hi, everybody. My name is Tressa Giordano. I'm the new Executive Director at AHM. I started in July, so I said I'm going to use the... I'm new for a whole year, so I've got six more months to use it. I have Steve Fish here. He's our new, same thing, July 1st, Board President. And Bill Sedal, he's a member of our Board as well. So if you want to pass these around, I came with some information tonight. I was asked to give a brief overview of what AHM does. And then, of course, if you have any questions, you're more than welcome to ask. AHM is interand over Hebron, Marlboro, Youth and Family Services. We also service the town of Columbia. We've been in existence for many years. Right around 1983 is when we began. We are by state statute the youth service bureau for this area. Some highlights that I wanted to talk about tonight. We do have a strategic plan that we just rolled out. Before I started, we had a grant from Hartford Public... Hartford Foundation for Public Giving to go through a pretty intense strategic planning process. What's exciting about the current strategic plan is that all the ideas, all the initiatives and concepts that came out of that were developed by community members. So there were a number of focus groups that were placed. Here, some of you are on those groups. A number of surveys that went out. So everything in our new strategic plan is based off the needs and the requests of our community members, which is really exciting. Some of the new things in our strategic plan coming out in the next three years. One area that kept coming up over and over within the focus groups was the need to service ages 18 to 26. There seems to be many folks in that age bracket within our communities that are struggling with substance abuse, anxiety, and depression. So AHM has taken it upon ourselves to look at ways that we can serve that population. Currently, we are running a Smart Recovery Group, which needs someone made at 5:30. So that's anyone within the ages of 18 to 26 who might be struggling with the substance abuse issue can come and join that group. We also have a friends and family component to Smart Recovery. That's on Thursday nights at 5:30. So anyone who has a family member or friend struggling with substance abuse can come to those recoveries. Within our recovery program, we also offer one-on-one counseling. We have counselors that are in our building throughout the day, as well as evening appointments. So we are able to offer therapy. We have different funding supports in place so if someone doesn't have insurance, that will not hold them up from getting the therapy that they maybe will provide them. Some other areas that our strategic plan will cover over the next three years. We're looking to roll out a new health and wellness program. We're working with a corporate funder on support for that. But the idea of this health and wellness program would be to offer different programming at our building, open to our four communities, from our youngest of community members all the way through. We'd love to see some intergenerational activities going on, but things that focus on health and wellness, whether it's nutrition, mindfulness, creative arts. We really want to be able to give folks the opportunity to try things that can help lower anxiety and depression, put them into a healthy mindset, and hopefully be able to connect with the community a little more. So that hopefully will be rolling out as well. I think the other areas that we're really looking to improve upon is just our connection with our communities, our marketing, making sure that we're getting our information out there clearly. We've just rolled out a new website that looks great. It's much more user-friendly. We're looking to use social media more, videos. We're going to be working with Community Voice Channel to hopefully have a monthly program. Yeah, I mean, I think as the new Executive Director, one of the things I really want to focus on is providing strong relationships from our school-based staff that are teaching at all of our schools to our staff that are in our building, to our Board members, and our many volunteers that we have at AHM. It's all about creating relationships. And we have a lot of resources at AHM for people in times of need. But we also want to provide a lot of community-rich programs so people can come through our doors and enjoy being together at any point in their lives. So that's in a nutshell what we're up to right now. It's an exciting time. I feel very honored to be able to be at AHM and work with our four towns. I really enjoyed meeting new people and just getting to know the community. Is there anything else that you want to add?
No, except that I think the only thing I... Well, yes, there is, I guess. The only thing I would add, as being the President of the Board, is that we have a really robust Board, made up of many, many, very good people from the three towns and also from the town of Columbia. I think there's 23 active members right now. We can have up to, I believe, 30. I don't think I'd want to go that many. That would be too much. But great people, great Board, very involved. We're here to support Tressa and the rest of the staff there.
I just have a couple of comments. You're probably wondering, "Where does the money come from?" Okay? Just to give you an idea of our funding sources, about 4% comes from charitable contributions. 21% comes from earned revenue. Fundraisers, about 9%. Grants, maybe around 27%. And the schools and towns pay about 35%, okay? And other revenue, maybe about 4%. So that's pretty much our funding sources. I've been on the Board for about eight years, and I think in the past, the town number has actually gone down. So we've been doing a lot more active, I think, in terms of obtaining grants, doing fundraisers and things of that nature. So we've been hoping around 35% for the town through the agreement we currently have. That's it.
I would just like to say, you know, AHM is one of those best-kept secrets. I think there's so many things that they could help people with. You know, a lot of people are thinking that just has to do with school, this or that. But correct me if I'm wrong, if people have sickness with children at home, you have services not only to help the parents cope, but also the siblings cope. Could you explain any of that type of...
Yeah, so we have, you know, different kind of branches of the agency. One of our biggest outreach branches is our Family Resource Center. So we have a program over at Riem High School, our Kindarama preschool program. We also have a space over at Gillian Elementary, where we have play and learn groups. That's a great kind of entrance into the agency where we're able to have parents and their little ones come through. You know, although it's a play group, there's a lot of education that goes into that. But you're right. At any point in anyone's life, if something is going on within their family dynamic, AHM is there to provide support. And if our agency cannot provide that support directly, we're a bridge to other resources within the community. So we're able to, you know, constantly be helping people, you know, if they have some kind of crisis or struggle in their life. But we also have just, you know, these ongoing programs, positive youth development, such as our summer youth theater, which is very popular. We've had hundreds of children come through our summer youth program, you know, in theater and just taking advantage of that wonderful opportunity. So we do try to span, you know, a whole life from the very young all the way now through age 26. And a lot of what we're doing is intergenerational. Our chores program connects seniors with youth workers. So we're able to have our youth workers going to homes and do, you know, small carpentry jobs, lawn cleanup, things of that nature. But having those connections between our seniors and our youth is very beneficial for all involved there.
I have a question for Steve. Steve, back during the "We Are Hebron," you gave us a brief overview of the mentor program. I think our people that are watching at home, as well as that are hearing right now, would love to hear about that.
Oh, boy. I saw my mentee this evening. I was over at age. I mean, he showed up and gave me two apples. That's a true story. I've given him two apples. I've been with him for about four years. And I gave... I've always started each one of our meetings with him with two apples. So he had sponsored special apples and gave them to me tonight. The mentor program is tremendous. It's a part of what the Lanterns Program. And what should I say about this? It's a... It's a program that's changed my life, seriously, in many ways. What it is, it's for people that are... There's some reason I'm getting awfully nervous here. I mean, I don't know why. I'm so into this. But the mentors program is designed for kids that are recommended to us. And what I did, I signed up for it and said, "I always wanted to work with kids again." And I ended up with Yanni. And Yanni's just tremendous. He's a phenomenal little boy. And he's made a difference in my life, but I've made a difference in his life, too. And so it's designed for these kids. And we look for people such as yourselves. It could be adults. It could be retired people, people that are working, that want to work and spend some time with a child. It's one hour a week, and it's just phenomenal. I just love it. And I actually spend more than an hour a week with Yanni. It comes out to be about two, two and a half hours. But he is just a phenomenal thing for me to have happen in my life. And the mentors program makes a big difference for most of the kids that we work with, almost all the kids we work with. So thanks for asking about that.
Where do the recommendations come from? And how are they referred to? Do you have enough people to support the need? I'm guessing you're all...
Support the mentors program?
Well, I don't know. How do the children get recommended?
Okay. The children are recommended through the schools, usually through the schools.
Yeah, or a parent. A parent can make them.
And the parents, yeah. And then what they do, they match us to them. In my case, I was matched to Yanni, and I don't know how it happened. But when I met him in fourth grade, he was reading at an 11th grade level. He liked C++, COBOL, and these other things. I came out of computers, and I'm also a biologist. So he loves science. And we found out that we just kind of matched each other. And he is just... He's just a wonderful thing that's happened to me. He said to me the other day that, you know, "You've got to be there when I graduate from high school." He's going into eighth grade now. So I met him in fourth grade. He's in eighth grade. But I've known several little people that are in the mentoring program. They've had kids right up through high school and beyond. They stayed in touch with them. It's just one of the little programs, the Lanterns Program that AHM offers, that I got involved with. It had nothing to do with I was on the Board or anything else. But just one of those things that we touch the kids in the communities. And it's phenomenal. It really is. And made a difference to both of us. Thanks for asking about that, Gail. Wasn't prepared for that. Maybe that's why I'm a little... Usually, I go over my little speech. I don't know why I'm getting... I'm getting kind of tongue-tied. Yeah, yeah, a little tongue-tied. But it does mean an awful lot.
We are always looking for mentors. There's always, you know, children that, you know, are kind of waiting for a match. We do provide training. We do provide background checks. And then we do host events throughout the year for the mentors and their mentees at our office, cookouts, these parties, Valentine parties. So we try to get everybody together, the mentors, the mentees, their families, a few times a year.
It is so indicative of AHM in many ways because that one little touch, you know, that interaction you have with the child or a parent even, even his parent, his mother. Good relationship there. And I think it's making a difference in his life. Certainly made a difference in mine, that's for sure. Thanks. Yeah.
Thank you.
So it looks like your charitable contributions are 4% or something like that? That's... I would just encourage everybody to contribute because AHM is so fundamental to this community. And I generally contribute every year when we remember it. So I'm just going to contribute right now because I always...
Holy cow. Blah!
Yeah, it's a very nice job. Got to let them through.
Thanks a lot.
Well, that's awesome. Thanks for saying that.
Corner.
Thank you.
Not made up to you.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the problem with that corner.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
It is true. A lot of, you know, what we do cannot go on without the support of our community, whether it's, you know, volunteering or by angel contributing. We really do, you know, appreciate every little bit that makes a difference if anything is needed.
Thanks.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Beautiful.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just have a question.
Yes.
So just, and this is no disrespect to anybody. I just want to know the rules because I think it's important over the last couple of years here. What's our... What is our... How do we cancel meetings? How do we go about that? Because is there some procedure that we go for?
Not really. When a meeting, and you were talking about the other day, basically, nobody was going to be around. We're not going to have a forum. And so because we're not going to have a forum, what's the sense of meeting? Because you can't conduct a business.
Okay. I just want to say, I think we have a lot to do. If there's any question that we don't have a full agenda, I could understand if people aren't coming. That's the holidays and all that. But that's just my feeling. If we have a meeting scheduled, then I don't want to cancel it just because we don't have enough on the agenda because there's plenty for us to do.
It was not agenda-driven. It was the fact that everybody else had commitments. Now, the other thing is, and I ask, if we are going to request that agenda items be added to the agenda, I also request that we supply some sort of backup for that, you know, just so that the Board members have an idea of what the agenda item is and a little bit of information as to what to expect the agenda item's going to be about.
Okay.
You know, and that's just fair to everybody. You know, the town staff, especially if it's anything that requires their input and time to get stuff together, especially around holiday or those weeks when, you know, there's not four weeks. They spend a lot of time trying to piece together all the different materials so that we have information that we can discuss. You know, so that's another thing that is kind of important. If you want to add something to the agenda, you know, A, it's supposed to go through the Chair, but there's also supposed to be some sort of backup documentation just so that everybody's on the same page.
I understand. So, you know, I'd ask that the sewer be on the agenda. So, you know, I'd ask that the sewer be on the agenda. I understand that there was no backup, but just so everyone understands, hopefully we can get it on the agenda next time. What I, what I would like to do, when I've been doing this now for two years, trying to get information about it. I've gathered a lot of information about it. But one of the things that I wanted to, is I want the board to be able to do is we've raised now seven point four million for the sewers. And, you know, our sewers are falling apart after twenty-five, thirty years. I want to have a discussion to make sure that that doesn't happen again. And I want to go through our policies. You know, I was told, and I think we did have previous boards actually rate the user fees to reduce the mill rate. And I want to have a discussion about that, that that's within our jurisdiction. If that happened, I'd like, I have documentation that it happened, but I'd also want to talk about model ordinances that other towns have that justify or give calculation as to what the operation and maintenance fees should cover. Other, other towns actually have ordinances that determine what the user fees, how much should be paid based on the maintenance and operation of the sewer systems, the replacement funds. And I think, you know, I don't, I don't actually have an opinion at this point, but I think it would be a good idea to actually review that so that the owners of the system, which is all of us, get a fair shake and the users get a fair shake. So that we review, you know, how that works. So there's some policies and some ordinances and just some clarification I'd like to go through, just so that, number one, when we go down the line in twenty-five years, our sewers aren't falling apart again. And number two, that everybody feels like it's fair. Because, you know, the town meeting, there were some people that were upset about, you know, the fact that other people weren't paying for their subject systems, but they were paying for their sewers. And that's, that is a, nationwide, that is an issue that people have. And I just want to have a clarification as to why we're doing it and if there's any ordinances that will, that, or procedures we can put in place to, to, to make sure that operations and maintenance are taken care of. And that is at a board of selectmen level and not at the W P C A level. So that's, and I will send out information, the stuff that I've gathered because I've spent some time on it.
Yes, and I believe, I know that we had discussed that somebody from the W P C A be at our next meeting.
Sure, that'd be great.
So I'm not sure where that sits at this point, but that was discussed. So that, again, they should be part of the discussion.
Sure.
Because they're the only ones that could really explain where we are.
Yeah.
We are at this point now, how do we get there? Is this normal for these types of systems?
Right.
You know, and so this way.
And I don't, I don't have a point of view. Actually, I'm still the educational role, you know, means I'm looking forward to seeing what people have to say so that we, so that we do.
Can you, can you kind of sort of develop some of the thought process? You're doing research, so maybe like we could anticipate some of the questions that might be raised. I don't know if it's way, because that would be helpful to me. I'd rather not get questions as they're being, because you'll have some good questions and I'll be hearing them maybe for the first time. I don't know if there's anything you could do to.
Sure, absolutely.
Some background, a little more.
Well, just for example, you know, other towns have clear reports, financial reports from the W P C A.
Well, I don't mean right now. I meant like prior to the next meeting, you know, I'm not putting you on the spot now. You speak, whatever.
I can go.
Because it sounds like you've done a bunch of research.
Absolutely, I'll send, I'll send it out.
Yeah, oh, great. Thank you.
Excellent.
Maybe this is addressed to Andy. Andy, we had an engineering study of it. How does the whole system fail at one time? Is it an imminent danger of failing? It seems that you wouldn't have to replace the whole system at one time. How do we get to this point where all of a sudden we're like, the system's going to fail?
Well, I don't, this is just my opinion. And we did, we did hire a professional.
Civil engineer?
Professional firm that deals in the sewers and wastewater. And it could have been phased, but it was a recommendation of the W P C A that the system, through wear and tear and aging out, you know, and some of the parts for the pump station have become obsolete. And to try to, you know, animate some of this stuff that they felt, even though we, we approved the monies, it's still going to be phased, you know, through, over, over like a ten-year period. So I think as things break or need to be fixed, we're repairing them. I don't think the whole system is in disarray, but I think the W P C A or whoever we want to come in here, will come in here and try to answer their questions to the best of their knowledge. And I, I think they're, you know, we'll get what, what we're looking for and we can never have enough explanation to the taxpayers on what and why they, you know, have to, you know, fit the bill for some of this stuff. And John's right, there's different methods in different towns on user fees and what they cover. And so, and, and how it's calculated. So that's an exercise that's probably good for everybody, including myself, to go through and see why we do it this way versus what Middletown did or other towns do. Because if you, if you have a chart with a comparison, if you don't know what you're looking at, it looks like we're really low, but if you see what we're doing with it and what other towns are doing with it, Kevin says he can bring it more into line. So I think he might be the person to speak to that. And.
This is why I want to make sure that someone was here when we do this. Otherwise, we're just talking in the back and then we're not getting any answers. Because.
We need an expert. And yeah, you're right. We need somebody who has the answer.
Yeah, the best thing, the best thing we could do is in a public setting with public and cameras, if you have the stuff in the packet or those people know what the questions are, I think the information that's portrayed to the public would be better.
And I agree, you know, it's, 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 it does not benefit anybody to blindside people. You have your questions out there so they are able to come up with a reasonable and knowledgeable answer.
Yeah, and this isn't meant to blindside anybody. Actually, this is, there's, I think there's two components to this. There's the board of selectmen has a role and then the W P C A has a role. And that's another account. The, the, the W P C A does set the user's fees, but there are ordinances that, that selectmen or town councils will put forward that gives guidance. And the guidance is good because if you say, for example, user's fees should, should contribute seventy-eight percent of maintenance, well, that's, that's a goal that you go towards and everybody agrees to that and there's a reason for it. And we don't have that now. And so, and so there, it goes to, to perhaps other policies that aren't helpful, like rating the user's fees to reduce the mill rate, right? And that's not a good thing to do, I don't think. So, because the users should, should have confidence that we're contributing the monies to, to maintenance of their system, of the system.
Do you see your researchers, do you see any sort of themes of consistency with the towns that we can sort of correlate to a gap? These are structured, the ordinances around, potential ordinances around this. Some best practices, I'm sure there's not an annual out there, but practices for it, but there might be some consistencies you saw, I assume.
Well, there are, there are model ordinances.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, but our, our system is a little bit more complicated because we have a commercial district, which would be one thing, if we just had commercial, you could just have model ordinances. Then we have Amstel Lake, which is completely residential. And then we have toward Pope Valley, a administrative order was put in there for environmental because it was polluting the river down downstream. And so it's a little bit more complicated, but the rationale, I think, we should have a rationale so that everybody understands. Thank you.
So just for clarification, we're going to add that to the next agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Could I just also, on the old business, could we have an update on Gilley Goodwater?
Okay. Appointments and resignations. We have got. Oh, yes. Yes, and that, you want to add under what, new business?
Yes, it's new business for the show. No, but yeah.
Okay. And that's the.
Evaluation of the town manager.
Right, so we'll discuss that, get that rolling also.
Do you want to add that on, or H is for any other new business on, under seven?
Just a preliminary so we can get to work on it next time.
A yearly thing. Okay. We have for Parks and Recreation. Parks and Rec, oh, no. Here, here. Do you want to read the appointment?
Item five A.
Five A. Filing individuals have indicated that serving on the Parks and Recreation Commission is Will Cox, the Will Cox, Eric May. The proposed motion, move that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen appoint following individuals to Parks and Recreation Commission, who are dedicated to Will Cox, term expiring in December twenty twenty-three. Dave Will Cox, term expiring in December twenty twenty-three. Eric May, term expiring in December twenty twenty-one. Okay, are these people here?
Yes.
Would you want to get put on the spot?
Really, you want to come up?
We don't bite.
Come on up. Come on up and they'll let the public see who you are and then they'll ask you some very hard questions.
Bring the big spotlight in, it's terrible.
Terrible.
Feel free to introduce yourself.
Yeah, I just have a question on the term appointments. Was that, not that I'm desiring the longer term, but.
You're going to, you're apparently finishing out a term that.
Somebody else said.
Yeah.
I'm Eric May. And I've lived in town since twenty thirteen. I work at UConn, I'm a professor there, molecular and subbiology. I have four, so when I'm not working, I have four children ages nine to two, all boys. And so most of my time is spent involved in youth sports, whether it's driving them to youth sports or coaching youth sports. So I'm involved in coaching baseball. I'm on the Rams boarders, youth baseball board directors. I'm currently coaching third, third grade youth basketball. I've done that for the past two years. So I really enjoy that, I really enjoy coaching and, and being in youth sports. And, and I, you know, so I'm interested in the fields, maintenance and programming and. Yeah, so I thought this appointment was quite well aligned with my interests and my family interests. So I would be happy to serve with, with the electorate, I guess.
No, pointy.
Pointy, yes.
Unless that door happens, it's a change, I don't see any reason.
I am Drew Wilcox. Kate and I have lived in town for going on five years now. I work for the local seven, seven, seven in Palmers and Plate Thitters. I'm a big sports fan, I played sports my whole life. And I'm looking forward to get back to the community. And I think that with my love of sports and construction, you know how Parks and Rec would be a great fit.
Hi, I'm Kate Wilcox. Like my husband said, we've been here about five years now. I'm a certified public accountant. I work for Fraser House Partners in Hartford, I'm an auditor. Been there about seven years now, so lots of experience with a lot of different companies and hoping I can kind of bring some of that to the Parks and Recreation Commission, funding, budgeting, things like that. Played sports my whole life, played soccer through college. And even our school, I think, is still pretty active, so live, sit down and do up in the, in the town.
Hey, great. Okay. Well, did you want to read that motion?
Sure, so I got ahead of myself?
Yes, I can reread it.
I did have a chance to interact a little bit with Drew, Kate and Eric at the last meeting I had to go to for Parks and Rec. They really seemed to fit in very well. I think they were a wonderful addition. So with that, I moved that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen appoint the following individuals to the Parks and Recreation Commission, terms as indicated. Drew Wilcox, term expiring in December twenty twenty-three. Kate Wilcox, term expiring in December twenty twenty-three. Eric May, term expiring in December twenty twenty.
Okay, any other discussion? Just want to say, Dr. May, if we could give out lifetime appointments, we would, so.
I'm not looking for that one.
Okay. All in favor, say, are you saying aye?
Aye.
Did you order?
No, no, that's good.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Everybody said aye, so. What you will, actually, they'll be getting a letter so they can go in and sworn in.
You can see the town clerk can get sworn in before the next meeting, but we will be sending out a letter confirming your appointment tonight. And just for the, not for me, but for the public, you might want to explain what that professor at the school actually really does.
Right now?
Yeah.
Well, I, I teach and I do research, I run a research group. My, my interest is in, I don't want to bore the, you already explained, but it relates to viruses and how viruses infect cells and so, yeah.
Good.
Thanks.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, and, and just we can see the town clerk whenever we have time?
Yeah, when we're open, you can stop in, she'll, they'll, they'll do that task.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, okay. Proposed motion, okay. Move that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen appoint Charlie Daniels, or Charles Daniels, as the Parks and Recreation Representative to the Open Space Land Acquisition, Acquisition Committee. Okay, this was an appointment that was made, or a recommendation that was made by Open Space for this appointment of Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec, yeah.
Right. Okay, all in favors, anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so be it. Okay. And then Fire Police. And then we have a memo from Chief Wallach recommending appointment of two new Hebrew Fire Police personnel. And neither one of them are here, so I've seen them on fire calls and what have you. So, move that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen confirm the town manager's appointment of the following individuals as Fire Police for a term to run until January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Michelle Barrett and Leland Finch. Any discussion? All in favors, anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, aye. We are on the six.
Six A, this would be the disband recognition of the Charter Division Commission. Somebody wants to read that? Gail might be appropriate.
Aye. Since the Hebrew Charter Division was approved on November fifth, twenty nineteen, and became effective on November nineteenth, twenty nineteen, it is now appropriate for the Board of Selectmen to disband the Charter Division Commission. Current members of the commission include Leonard Saban, Mark Allen Baker, Jeff Eaton, Demille Isarelli, Kenneth Jordan, Maulekta, Keith Pettit, and myself, Gail. The motion for a resolution to be resolved that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen disband the Charter Division Commission effective immediately and express appreciation for the diligent work of the commission, culminating in a successful vote on Charter Division on November fifth, twenty nineteen.
Okay. Hearing the resolution, any comments? All in favor, say, are you saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so be it. Okay.
Next item would be six C, and this is the poet laureate ordinance. And this is asking to set the public hearing date. Sure. That's the standard.
I think it has something, when we first started this at the library, we realized that we needed an ordinance in order to make it more legal, more effective.
It should be under purview of the library. I don't understand why we have a public hearing, you know.
Well, most, many of the towns, when a couple of us went out looking, a lot of the towns have poet laureates under the town, even though they have a library administrative.
If it's going to be approved by the Board of Selectmen, then an ordinance would be appropriate. If it was just going to fall underneath the library, it would, I don't know if it would have the same.
You'd be surprised how controversial this is, so.
Really? You're giving me a sarcastic.
No. Thank you, thank you, John. That's what they wanted to do, that's what we're doing.
Okay.
That was what came back from the committee that looked into it. I had the library director also look into it and there was people on the library board that submitted the information and we reviewed it and here we are.
Came up with a bunch of towns that had poet laureates and the ordinance really seemed to be the way we thought. We'll come to you and get a phone submission.
Qualifications to be a poet laureate for your town?
Are there qualifications to be a poet laureate for your town?
There is, there is a, an application process that will be...
Yeah.
Will be recruited.
Okay. You gotta meet the requirements to be a poet.
No, no lyrics, that's not...
Yes, please.
Move that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen schedule a public hearing for Thursday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty, at seven P M. At the town, or Hebrew Town Office Building to receive public comment on the proposed Hebrew poet laureate. Yeah.
Okay, hearing the motion, any further discussion? All in favors, anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so be it. So that'll be January sixteenth, seven o'clock, here.
And that's just, that's Mark's question, that's just before the next Board of Selectmen, so we have it at seven o'clock, yeah.
Okay.
So, any other real business? Parks and culture, that's coming down like a grater?
I think, I think John asked that, it's not on the agenda, but if we have to add it, we can, or I can just give him an update on the Gilead Hill water on the town manager, or do it now? However you want it.
Sure.
Yeah, what I, what I, what I can report is what I was told by the outgoing interim superintendent, which, the new superintendent, I think his first day was today. So he sent me his contact information. But in talking to Lin, Dr. Lynn Pearson, the sampling, they did sampling at the school on a Saturday, they took about a hundred and fifty samples, what I was told. And then I was also told that either the firm or the laboratories during the holiday season were shut down, so they're waiting to get the samples back, is the update that I got. And that's, that was the extent of that, so you don't have the information back yet due to the holiday. I guess they closed down for the week, is what I was told.
Let me just express a little bit of concern about this, the process. And you know I've been involved in this since January of last year, of this last year, yeah, January, January last year. My concern is this. The reason why we're doing this is because we foiaed the data, and the data suggested that there are elevated lead concentrations. At Hebronell, where we're replacing the pipes because it exceeded the LCR, the, the actual standard, we, we never had to engage with counsel. For some reason, Board of Education has now engaged a lawyer, and lawyer has contracted out a consultant. So we are away from, arms length from the actual data, and it can't be foiaed, because it's now under attorney-client privilege. I mean, we could, with their consent, get the data. I want to make sure that we get all of the data. So what we're going to see is seventy-five samples of static and stasis water that follows EPA protocols. And then we're also going to get seventy-five samples of flushed water, which is thirty seconds after the, the first sample's taken. And there are two different types of data, and there's going to be a report. I'm, I, for me, I'm interested in the data, and so, and all of the data, I want to see all of the data. And again, so I'm expressing my concern that, I, I, I hope that we get all of the data, and we get it quickly. I don't want to wait for a report from the consultant. The data will say exactly what the issue was, it doesn't need nostalgia. You'll know when you see that data, if there's an issue with it. So, that's my request. Few of my requests have ever been acknowledged or, you know, answered, but except for the fact they're flushing now, which is what I requested back in January two thousand nineteen, and that they take samples, but eventually. But that is my concern. I'll just put it out there.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, just to make, let me make sure it makes sense, so you, when you expressed that concern about, you're going to transparent the independence of the city's data, is you have a concern that you won't get it because, in time, you know, or you told you you may not get all the data?
No, they haven't said that, it's just this process has been like pulling, it's gone, it's gone from January, and, and I can send you my, I sent a letter to them over a vacation, I'll send it, I'll send it to the board, about what I see as the history of what's happened so far. I, I don't understand why we need to go through a lawyer, because at Hebronell, where we had a more serious problem, we just went out and got twenty samples and bang, oh, we knew we had a problem. And it's not, the other, the other concern I have is, at Hebronell, we have, as you know, probably know, we've contacted UConn and, and hopefully they're going to be doing a study with the, the pipes that we have that go through various time periods, nineteen forty-eight, nineteen fifty-seven, that shows deterioration of, of the pipes themselves. Also, we have a lot of water quality data that we can match up to that. And what happened at Hebronell, there was a fast collapse of the system, even though there was orthophosphate system. And what I requested in November was that they take some measures of deterioration, and I don't think they did. And I also asked that they take some measures of precision, I don't think they did. So I'm concerned about the QAQC, I wasn't allowed to, to review the Singapore analysis plan, which is, you know, it's just routine that you would do that. They, they didn't send it to me, and I, I don't, I, I don't think they have all of the analyses that would be helpful. Because what happened at Hebronell, like I said, we were meeting the LCR, the lead copper rule for a long time. And then we took a sample last year, and it wouldn't, it met the LCR, and I give, like I said, I give the superintendent credit, we didn't turn the water back on. And then this following, following June, June two thousand nineteen, it was a disaster. I mean, we had high concentrations of lead throughout the entire system. So, I'm concerned. I just, I just expressed that, you know, that's my, my job is to say what I think, and, okay, I'm waiting for the data. Okay?
Can I clarify that, I'm trying to understand something. So, if we as a board request information concerning the well-being of our town, another body can get a lawyer to oppose us and waste town taxpayer money, and we making up a request for that? That seems to show a great lack of community.
The water falls under the purview of the Board of Education. It is up to them to verify that it meets whatever the state standards are, the Department of Public Health. And as that, as that is their responsibility, it falls under their guidance, their auspices.
But if they're, but if they're transparent, Dan, and we ask them for that, why do they have to get a lawyer to obfuscate the whole request system and make it more difficult for everybody to understand?
I don't think that I have all of the answers. I know there was information that was requested that supposedly they did not readily have. They get the report stating the water met quality as stipulated by the state. And that's where they said their responsibility in a sense stopped. They did decide that they would do flushing to see if they could get it better. You know, but as I say, that would be something that I would think that you would need to talk to the superintendent, who is no longer here, to find out how and why everything went down the way it did. I can't say because I'm not personally knowledgeable of all of what transpired.
And I don't know with Lady Gallo, all of it, but it seems that Andy should be able to ask for certain information, and it should be forthcoming without becoming a legal dispute.
The, the board voted on a letter a couple of months ago, and I think if they get the data or the report from the sampling, if they get it, I should be able to get it, and as soon as I get it out, give it to Selectman Collins, the rest of the board.
Okay, so, so it's, it's, it's not, I mean, I, I think, let me just go through this. We, I requested data from Gilead Hill for months, and they wouldn't give it to me. Or there was some reason they couldn't give it to me, they didn't keep it, that's what they said, they didn't keep it. But, you know, the laboratory did keep it, and they could have given me access. So eventually I just foiaed it and got it from the Department of Public Health. And it showed elevated lead concentration, something that had been shown or written about in two thousand sixteen in, in The Mirror. But below fifteen parts per billion, that is the threshold for lead copper rule. However, in the meantime, between, you know, two thousand seventeen and two thousand nineteen, EPA had come out with a, a very unusual declaration in which they said, you know, no lead is, is, is acceptable or is safe for children in, in blood, in their blood. And there's numerous studies that show even low levels of, of lead in water. That leads to elevated lead concentrations in children's blood. And so, we're talking about five-year-olds here, and they're the most sensitive, obviously, receptors. So, we got the data, and yes, there was only fifteen samples done in the last ten years, but there was a high of twelve parts per billion, and, and there were other, ten out of fifteen samples that had, had lead. So, throughout that, I asked for flushing, flushing is an interim remedy, it's not a permanent remedy, you can't use it as a permanent, permanent remedy, but it's useful. I asked for samples, and they delayed sampling until they hired a lawyer, and they finally sampled in December twenty first. Now, I've been asking for sampling for, for, you know, so long. So I give them credit for sampling, thank you, but they did it in such a way now that what forced this entire thing was, was the FOIA. The FOIA was legally compelled them to give me the data. Now, the data's out of reach, and hopefully, and I'm just saying this, I, I want to see all the data. That's, that's it, I want to be able to see all the data, and I'm not relying on the consultant's report, so, just, I'm just putting them on, 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 on notice. I am not, I, I was a consultant, I'm not relying on the consultant's report, I am relying on the data, and that's it. So I want to see the data as soon as possible.
Okay. Here we go. Okay, seven.
Seven A, the Rifkin property. The plans, the tax or preliminary plans prepared for senior housing on the Rifkin property. Town Clerk Michael Leary will be in attendance at the meeting to provide an overview of the plans and respond to some questions. So just quickly, if you remember, in December, we came in and did a thorough PowerPoint, and we had different scenarios that the Housing Authority went through, the town manager's office, and we brought it to the Board of Selectmen. And we had pretty much picked out the one that we thought best suited the needs, and also what could fit the property along with helping the existing senior center while parking and the cut through where to access the property. So this is just to keep, this is a pretty important topic as well, and this is just to keep the Board of Selectmen abreast moving forward. Every step of the way, Joe and I just had a meeting about projects that, as you get certain steps, I bring it back to my committee for review to get fingerprints on it. So, everybody has a hand in this, so that's exactly what we're doing. We went back to the architect, we had some renderings drawn, and I feel it's appropriate, before we move any further, that we sit and discuss what we're proposing. Michael?
Thank you.
Just get a little minute to get this fired back up. It timed out again?
Should we just throw them to the desk or is it...
It's up to you guys.
We talked about the neighbors.
It'll take a second.
It tastes quick enough.
Excuse me, I got a freaking nasty cough.
This probably won't be fine, but who owns these?
We would own them.
We all own them?
Yeah.
Do we generate taxes?
No. No, we're going to try to get grants to build it, and then we just charge enough to maintain them.
Thanks, that's all we do, so that it doesn't help our tax burden at all. Sure.
I'm Andrew, ask if I would come, I'm Michael Leary, for anyone that doesn't know me yet. And just give you a brief update, we were here back in September, the current, the board members that were here before will remember that, with Tom Fenton, our town engineer, as well as Terry Han, who's a landscape architect that we hired, to develop some concepts for this property. So I'm just going to do an abbreviated little background, so we're all kind of on the same page. Of course, there's the town center, and you can pretty easily see the crossroads of sixty-six and eighty-five. There's the Rifkin property on the southwest corner of the intersection, just two lots removed from, from the intersection. So that's what we've been calling the Rifkin property, because that's the family we most recently bought the, bought the property from. As Andy mentioned, we went through a fairly extensive process of looking at how this property could be used for senior housing. And it may be just, be maybe worthwhile just to go back a little bit why we're doing this. John talked about data, data, data. There's an awful lot of data on the increasing percentage of elderly population, not only in Hebron, but all like towns, really, throughout the state. But in the last census period, which now is getting a little older, but these, these statistics and numbers are very consistent up to even current estimates with the last census period. For instance, the, the overall town population increased twelve percent during that particular decade. The sixty-five and older population increased seventy-nine percent during that particular decade. The eighty-five and older population group increased over two hundred percent. Those numbers, however you look at it, is all very consistent, even with the current estimates. In fact, UConn, the statewide data center for census numbers and projections of population. They're estimating that by twenty twenty-five, the, the, from today to twenty twenty-five, it's going to increase another thirty-seven percent of the sixty and over age population. There's a waiting line at the senior center, all the indicators are that there's a crying need for additional senior housing, not just at the upper income level, which, you know, maybe the optimists, senior living takes care of some of that, but at the, at this income level of subsidized, town-owned senior housing. The beauty of this particular piece is that it's immediately adjacent to the senior center parcel, it backs right up from West Main Street, the back property line. You can see the existing senior center is sitting right there with their parking lot. So this was identified for years as a, as a really interesting piece, the town probably should pick up. In two thousand sixteen, after years of discussing this with the property owners, appraisal was done by the town. And the following year, two thousand seventeen, there was an agreement on price, which was the appraised price that the town appraiser that we hired identified was, was the market value. The town purchased the piece, went to town meeting, purchased the piece for this use for future senior housing. So at that point, trying to make this a little quick, we did get together as a, as a project team with LADA, Landscape Architects, our town engineer, myself. We met a couple of times, I think it was, the Housing Authority, to try to get the rim put on, what types of units are, are desired down the road, how many units would be reasonable to, to add. Our landscape architect went through a number of different scenarios, different pods like we have now at Stonecroft, or one central building, or maybe a smaller central building with some additional pods. And the consensus was that a single building really fit the site better, because there is a, this sort of a level spot, then there's a slope in the middle, and there's another level spot down the bottom, and you could take one single building and really fit it into that slope very nicely. You can see option seven A, yes, there were all those different options. go to their neighbor, go to the community room, go to an event that's happening in some space within the building. Because right now, you have a lot of that, having to go outside and travel from building to building. And this, from the Housing Authority standpoint and from our properties who manages the, the housing there, that, that was seen as, as a much better solution, so just blow that up a little bit. So, that was the site plan. And this is what we presented back in September. That this was a good approach. What, what this allows is, is, doesn't take up room if the town ever wants to do an expansion of the senior center. See that light brown is the existing senior center and the dark brown is, is room that can possibly expand someday if needed. There's a parking issue, probably everybody's aware of that, the existing senior center. This shows an expansion of that parking, which could be a standalone project, that could be a great CIP project, really, or if there's grant money. That, that pavement is small, like a park that's too small, the dimensions are wrong, it's just, it's a parking lot that really needs some help. So, that, that accommodates that, but also then provides access into the loop around this future potential building. It does show an access out to Route 66. I'm, I'm not a great fan of that, it's possible, it could be just an emergency access, which would be a good idea. So, there's not just one single access into it. Or it could be a right turn and right turn out, properly designed, so you don't get that left turn on that hill going down West Main Street. So, it's, it's a concept plan, but this one fits the utilities, it fits the slope, it fits those blue little bubbles or stormwater detention and stormwater quality retention areas. The town engineers looked at all that. So, this, this was what we presented in September. The consensus was, this, this makes sense. And the, and the reason we're heading down the path, although Andy doesn't have the checkbook yet to, to build this, is that we were told by housing consultants that you really need more than just an idea or a wish or, or a thought. You really need to put pen to paper, show the lending authorities, potential funding authorities, exactly what you're looking at and have it, basically have some skin in the game, that you've done some homework, you've looked at it, and you've got some community input on it and exactly what you want. So, from this point, we actually, after that meeting, decided to go one step further, and I think that's what's in your packet. And the concept of putting a golden form to that footprint. If you remember back in September, we talked about a project that we were referred to by some housing consultants we were working with, of a barn type of structure, it seemed like it would fit into the character of Hebron. And so, they used that sort of as a motif, if you will, and so now they've come up with, okay, here, here could be a concept of what this building looks like. So, that, that's the sketch and then a little bit of a color rendering of it, that would be the face of the building facing West Main Street. Of course, it'd be set back, there'd be some landscaping, of course, and that type of thing. But you can see, it's, it's built into the slope. So, from the upside, it's a two-story building, and from the downside, you have that basement exposed. And you'll see on your floor plans at that basement level, if you will, the back end of it could be storage for residents, which is all we need, utility space, and it could be some function rooms if you, if you really needed that type of space. From the senior center side, you would look back and see this. And this is a little different than what's in your packet, by the way, I just got this in this afternoon, because I really didn't like that, and, and a lot of the comments I had received back was that the extension on the south side of the building looked a little rough on the first go-around. And so, the architect actually said, why don't we, it's supposed to be a barn, just why don't we make it look more of a silo type of effect, so you can see that rounded silo. And that provides a, a community space on every floor at the end of the corridor, which is a really nice gathering spot. One could be a library on one floor, it could be a practice room on another floor, it could be a kitchen on the third floor, you could, you could use it for many things, but it would be the common community space. And so, there's the uphill and the downhill side. So, from, say from driving from the center of town, if you're going down the hill looking over, you would, you would see that view on the top, the two-story approach. And as you would come around and maybe park on the downhill side, you would see that exposed basement. So, these are, again, concepts, they can change, but this was a, the thought that, you know, let's try to make this look more of a, kind of a, it's good size, but make it look more of a rural character, of a barn type of a, of approach that fits the site and fits that site plan that we spent some time developing. So, the floor plans, you'll see, that's the basement floor level. So, there's, I think there's only six units there, office area, elevator, and that storage space slash community space, but whatever space you want in that back, they would have very little natural light. So, as you go up to the main level, and that would be the main level from the upside, you know, it's a relatively extravagant layout, it's a fairly simple layout, you have a central corridor, you have exposure to the light on all the units on both sides. So, there's 14 units, I believe, there, and there's flexibilities. These could be, you could modify some of these to be a little smaller and have single-bedroom units. These, these have enough room to be two-bedroom units. You could have a three-bedroom unit and have some other one-bedroom units, but if they were all just kind of laid out for two-bedroom units, as shown, it shows 14 on each of these floors. And that's the upper floor, the top floor, of course, elevator. And you can see that bulge on the side, that's the community space, again, on each, on each building. So, a lot of this is a bit of a repeat, but that what you're seeing new tonight, that you didn't see before, was architectural sort of expression of that building footprint. So, I think at this point, we have an awful lot of information as what the desires are, unless there's any other input on this, and to start to speak with some housing consultants, and I think that Tom Anderson's already working on, on that aspect. So, that's what I wanted to just at least bring to the board's attentions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions on Michael?
No, I think it's a great start. I like, I definitely like the idea where you have, you know, access from both levels. And that was something that I had mentioned right at the beginning, that it just makes so much sense that you could have people literally discharging both, I guess it'd be to the east and to the west.
That's right.
Yeah, so, I think it's great, looking at some of the square footages and some of the units, I'm not sure what makes a two-bedroom or a one-bedroom, but I don't think any more than two bedrooms.
1025 square feet.
Yeah, you know, this is...
That's a lot.
Is that the picture you're...
Yeah.
Right, I agree, but, you know, there's flexibility, that's all I was trying to say, so, whatever the needs are, that's how it can be designed. There's plenty of flexibility in that footprint.
What would be a timeline?
Well, I'm going to talk about next steps, if, if there's no more questions or mine.
Sure. I, I think it's a great design. Is, is it board and batten, is that what you're indicating there? Is it vertical siding? What is, are you not sure yet?
I think the architect, yeah, tried to make a replica board and batten, like a, but it probably, it's probably a little siding.
I love, I love that. So, is, is this already approved that we're doing this?
We own the land, well, actually, Andy can go get into it, we own the land, it was purchased with the thought of doing senior housing. And that's really about as far as we've gone. Now, we've got some, some transitions of some buildings and things.
Well, the need presented it, as Mike and Gail knows, as Mike referred to the statistics of aging population and older people who've even been living longer, there's a, there's a real need. And with that being said, there was other reasons we bought the property as well, because we really didn't want a commercial building there with an entrance on to 66 stacking at an intersection, especially in a climate of weather, that would cause a lot of traffic jams. And as you can tell throughout town, people want to get through rather, you know, quickly in the morning and night when they're coming home, nobody can hold them against that. With that being said, we have the parking issue that Mike alluded to at the existing senior center, this property abutted that. The only way that we think we could have dealt with that issue was buy this piece of property and show what the design is showing. So, there was three major reasons to buy that. The fourth one was, is the price of the property came way down from the original cost of a million, almost just under a million dollars.
A little less than half, yeah.
So, we, we, we worked with the owner, we, we got it at what we feel was a reasonable price, and no one, you know, the topography of the land, it would be somewhat of a little bit of a challenge to come up with something, and I think we were tasked with doing that, and that's what you're seeing here tonight. I don't want to go much further without having fingerprints on it from the board, the boards and the Housing Authority, but Mike has been working very diligently on this, and I felt it very imperative to get back to you guys to look at this stage, because what would probably happen next, Peter, is, we just went out and RFP for a consultant, one, to administer a grant that you've already got, to finish the work at the existing housing complex down below. And also in that RFP, we said that we would have an additional project. So, what we would immediately need to do is get some sort of numbers, if this was to be approved, to, to this package, and then try to, immediately try to solicit grant monies to help the town actually facilitate or build this.
So, as a police officer, my favorite citizen is a senior citizen. And you and I...
That's because we're nice.
That's right. And you and I, we just acquired senior citizenship, so, so we could live here. But, but my question is, why would we engage in a project that gets no revenue for the town, but we have to provide more services? So, nobody pays taxes there, and we're breaking even on it, but it costs the town more money to run. I could see the fact that we have more residents in town, and maybe they use businesses more, but I, I don't see how it's a home run for anything.
This is...
Waiting for you, Gail, you're...
They, they are rental units, so there will be rent for these units.
But we don't make any money from it, we just break even on it. And nobody pays taxes, so it's like having a nonprofit.
But don't you want the people who've been living here all these years paying taxes, supporting the community, working, volunteering for the community? And what do they tell me when I go down the senior center? They want to stay here, but there's no housing for them. They want to stay here because they're planted in the community, their whole social life is here, their activities are here, and they want to remain. But they can't right now, because eventually, they can't stay in those single-family homes.
I, I like that. So, is it only open to people from our town that live here, our existing residents of the town? Or are we just taking anybody and everybody?
You know what happens at Stonecroft, they're waiting list is so long, right, Florence, they have to cut it off.
Well, Gail, I guess in my point, the question I would have maybe to follow up on what you're saying, because I don't think there's any question that there's a need, that's the issue. But, could we have, could we have sold the property with proper zoning restrictions to have a third party build affordable housing, senior affordable housing? So, it could be a tax spend, but I guess that may be...
Yeah, it is.
So, we certainly, but have someone else build and manage the affordable housing.
That could be one of the options, is to have a, a private contractor come in and you'd have to, you know, work with the town, but if you get that, we...
Or if you're an existing resident, you get a different rate. But it still generates, doesn't generate income.
No, you're just talking, yeah, you're talking about how to make, how to make it a profit. I thought there's a need...
Not even a profit, just to offset the services that it's going to create.
I'm a fan of profits.
Well...
It's still needing a need.
Well, you know, everybody needs to contribute at every level, but just obviously at a different rate. I mean, if, if you're a senior citizen, making $40,000 a year on your fixed income and you're living here, of course, but you can't generate no income.
I'm going to open it up, and I'm going to ask Florence, because she's part of the Housing Authority, can you give any kind of information, because I don't know, on how the B structure is for that?
I'm Florence O'Sullivan, I'm chairperson of the Housing Authority at Stonecroft. We have the pods for the different buildings, and they have to walk to the laundry and the, you know, be outside, as Mike said, this building would not. We have to file every year and do a part of the pilot program, payment in lieu of taxes, okay? But we are funded by the state, so this, I think, is a different situation than what you are hoping to do. All right? So, according to state regs, as far as wait lists, we cannot have just Hebron residents. We are not allowed by state statutes, all right? So, what you are looking at here may be a totally different situation, and I understand your concern about, you know, wanting to, you know, at least break even, if not make a bit of profit.
Right.
But, that is something that is beyond my purview, because that is not the way Stonecroft is going to behave, but...
Yeah, so much of this is going to be determined by the funding agency and the funding source. If we take state money, nonprofit money to build this, which you'll be very happy to get, because that's not a cheap building.
Right.
That, they will determine the occupancy and...
And all...
Florence is absolutely right. They will require that that's open to all state residents.
Is there a rate that they set also? Who sets the rate for what the rent will be, based on the square footage?
Interesting. I, I, I'm not sure that I can answer that. I know that we have just increased our rates, um, two years ago. It's very affordable, it's $590 a month. We do have some people who actually have been living there since it opened in 1990. Their rent is in the 300 range, because they were grandparents.
Gotcha.
Okay, so, it, it depends on so many variables, and funding is really the one that will drive what it is that the town can do, what they can charge, who they can open up for. So, if we could have someone build it, and then they would get to generate, you know, take care of the rentals, and we would get taxes there, that would be a win-win for everybody, but it may not be possible.
Thank you.
Then if you look at the, Barb, if you look at, if we're privately done, and the law enforcement is securing tax credits, the tax credit's depending on what, it's section 42 or different tax credits, that'll dictate some of the rent structure based on median income, and just so they look at the specifics of the town, the community, and they'll start to engage rent, rents based on statistics, which have been driven off the, the fact of getting taxed on, or so, there's some structure around it. But there's a waiting list, and with the structure, there's an opportunity to, yeah, make money, but still serve the community of the public, so that's, it's just a good dialogue to have.
Okay.
But you do have to be careful to not make it impossible for people to be able to live there.
Right.
I don't know that I have a single resident whose earnings even reach 30,000 a year.
Oh, on fixed income.
On a fixed income, yes. And some of them are really scrabbling, even with the rental structure that we have. So, to make it available to, like Gail had mentioned, we have so many people who want to stay in their town, but when you're on a, when you're on social security, doesn't allow you to do very much.
I better understand now, thank you.
Well, that's a great question, and that's why we're here with this tonight, because we want to let you know what we, what we, and Gail, correct me if I'm wrong, what we thought we heard was, we're proposing a building to be built and subsidized by state monies. The existing housing we have now, as you can see, this is a second round of grants that we received through small, small cities to update them, new roofs, new doors, new sidewalks. But, I wanted to be clear, we don't, the town doesn't make any tax money on that or any, any...
I just wanted to say something from a planning standpoint, housing standpoint, everyone to categorize it. There's a need for more attached housing in all these small towns in Connecticut, for just human needs, also for economic development. This brings people in that are going to be walking up the main street and shopping and using services in this town. So, when you say we're not making any money on it, well, it's going to generate activity in the center of our community.
Right.
That is positive from many different standpoints, from a social standpoint, from a human standpoint, from a economic development standpoint. There's a whole range of multifamily housing. I mentioned the Optimus Holbrook property down on Horton Boulevard, and that, that serves a certain segment of the population. Elderly segment, certainly not subsidized, it's, it's a very hefty rate. There are other market-driven projects that are being built right now, behind the library, that is going to be a mixed-use development with some apartments in it, that's going to be market rate, market set rates. We talked to another developer, we're with a water company, and Andy and ourselves in the stat, in the land use area about doing another market-driven apartment complex in town that'll be taxable, privately done. All of these are... That is going to be a mixed-use development with some apartments in it. That's going to be market rate, market set rates. We talked to another developer, Water Company, and Andy and ourselves in the land use area about doing another market-driven apartment complex in town that'll be taxable privately done. All of these are right around the center of town, right in the business area or next to the business district. Again, that will service all these different needs, but at the lower income levels. Now, that's an area where it's, to me, one of the town's responsibilities to step in and say, you have an income-level group that needs also to be serviced, and the market is not there to service them. At least they're not jumping up and doing it. And that's a very logical spot for government to step in and say, hey, let's look at this too. So it's not just one segment group. The idea is really to service all economic groups in your housing market in town. That's why we're doing this.
Well, it eased my concern quite a bit when she said that the state helps fund it. For us to build the whole building, we would probably never recoup what we put into that building. It would be over such a long period of time, having to meet the rate of which people can pay. So that changed my whole...
It was a great question. I think we have to build the whole building, fund everything, the maintenance of it.
This is very early in the process, and it's all going to be dependent upon...
Have you discussed any of your concerns yet? It hasn't even come on the radar yet.
So when Culbrook came in my first meeting as a selectman, and there was tax payment, I looked at the business, and even at that high-end business, because I would prefer a market-driven solution, obviously. But even the high-end, and Culbrook Village is high-end.
Yes.
It's tough. They're not making money on a lot of their other facilities. It's really, you know, location is huge, and I mean, they're marketing the hell out of it. So for a low-income senior citizen, I kind of agree with Mike that, you know, we have, we take care of our children. We take care of our seniors. We should do what we can.
And the thought that occurred to me while I was sitting there and you were beginning to speak was that seniors need a place to, they need a place to live where it'll be home because this has been their home for so many years.
I think we have a responsibility. They lived here for so long. They paid taxes to the town. They contributed to the town in other ways. They made it the place that we are all still choosing to live in, so. They don't have a big income now, but we have a responsibility.
But they're not necessarily getting a free ride either.
No, no.
So nobody said that, you know, they just moved in and there's no cost for them. We haven't even begun to discuss what the cost to the individual rentee would be. Well, again, that would all be part of what the study would do would be to come up, you know, with the UHBB, how would they be funded, how they would be supported, and then on the other side, how that monies would come in, you know, the amounts, all of that. It has not yet been discussed. I think it's way too early in the process to really get into that, but that's definitely something that has to be looked at. How does that get subsidized? When does it get subsidized? You know, I think it should at least be neutral. It's got to at least be neutral.
So a question about those people that have been there for 29 years. Do their rates, do their rent not go up or something?
I wasn't there in 1990. I came on board a little while after that. But when we did the increase, we have had two increases, I believe, but they were grandfathered. Whoever had been living there at that particular rate got to keep that rate.
Almost like rent control.
Almost like, yes. You are correct.
Okay.
Check out a timeshare without a maintenance fee.
So that's a deal?
So I see, the business line, I see quite a bit of privately-owned senior affordable housing.
Yep.
So is that going to be an avenue that's at least going to be explored as maybe not the most effective way? I'd like to see what that option is.
Sure.
And compare it to the town taking it on as a housing authority and how it's going to...
What we're proposing is to put, if you guys are going to give us a go-ahead with the conceptual plan of that building, we would put some construction and site numbers to do in that project and see what that actually is for a value. And it could go either way. We could try to use our consultant to solicit grants if we want, or we can try to solicit private contractors.
Anarchy, yeah. Try that. We can back with options.
It may not be the best option, but we'll have to answer to, sometimes ask a question at some point if there's a tax credit. Or maybe we look at all some of this to fund them.
I know as far as private development and the zoning regulations that allow these types of developments in town, there's certain provisions in there that for this kind of density, you have to have a percentage set aside for affordable or median income or below. But it's only 10% or 15% of the total number of units in the building. So it's less effective to meet the needs that we're talking about. But that's your trade-off if you don't want to go through the grant rounds and the rest of it. So it's depending on what target you're looking to serve to meet.
That would be great if we did that.
We can do that, and just to be clear, what we did is we proceeded. There's also a criteria that you need to get the funding for it. And because of its closeness or attachment to the senior center and the housing already, we didn't go with the last round of funding because, as you stated, it would state monies. They could dictate, it doesn't have to be just seniors. They could put any low-income housing in there. We didn't feel that that would be a good fit for us because of the, where it is and what we were trying to accomplish. So that kind of put a little bit of a restriction on us moving forward that we just want senior housing. But once again, we'll look at it. If we get the go-ahead, if people like the conceptual plans, if that's what I'm hearing, on the building, we'll move forward to put numbers to that. And then we'll come back and say, hey, this is what it's going to cost. Do you want us to go out and try to get this funded through grants? Or do you want us to see if people are willing to bid on that project and own it?
Well, I'm firmly behind senior housing. It's just how we go about accomplishing that goal. I'm just asking questions.
You want a motion?
Nope.
Or you're satisfied with just...
No, I think we don't need a motion to start putting numbers to a...
A consensus that we're in the right direction in terms of the use of the property.
The building's fantastic.
And once we get, you know, a person that is familiar, you know, there's three firms that bid. We've worked for the most part with all of them in one form or another. So whenever we select, that could be somebody brand-new, and they'll have a lot more of experience in the states and the funding and how we should go about that. And we would bring them in to speak to you so you wouldn't have to listen to...
The amazing thing is that the way the population is aging so rapidly, this is not going to satisfy the need.
No, no.
So what we need is, what's that?
That's right. It's just going to surface.
Yeah, scratch the surface.
It's like a big building.
There's not that many apartments.
Thirty-six or something, right, Mike?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
You could actually arrange those sizes to have more...
I thought I said forty for some reason.
Up to forty as well. That was the program we were trying to achieve. That particular floor plan showed thirty-four. You could use it. We're very, these are concepts. We're very...
And just to round it out too, at Stonecroft, we have only one-bedroom units. And we have one disabled young man and one couple, black and white couple. There is a need for two-bedroom units, you know, family members, so, you know, that is something else to keep in mind.
That's what we need to kind of talk more about is what's the problem? How many twos? How many ones?
Yeah, that'll add more units.
This is really tricky, but I implore us, is whatever the zoning says, please put a full commercial system, simple system in that building. Last thing on my mind is these big plant buildings and 13-hour systems are what the code is. And it's the cost to move to a full commercial system is not much relatively speaking, and the life safety changed in that, and insurance costs are about 40% less. There's a lot of benefits that aren't really thought about. And so we see it, and life goes this way after the fact, and we just shake our head saying, why didn't you put in a full commercial system? It's not required is what we're told. And then so I will bring it up later as a question.
And the fact that it is on a public water supply helps. You have to try to do it with tanks and jockey pumps and all that.
I think zoning would probably tell you it's a residential system. It's just...
No, you can name it, you know, especially if it's a department.
Thank you, Michael.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you all.
I like the red, too.
Thank you.
Oh, it looks wonderful.
Okay, we're done. The Maple Festival.
Yeah. So you're going to hear from me, or we could put this on to the next agenda, but she gave me some highlights. What, quite frankly, they're looking for and the reason it's early is we're having our first organizational meeting next, the ninth, I think that's Thursday. And what they're trying to do is some of the concerns we had after the post-meeting last year, it was a successful Maple Fest, at least as far as the attendees. But a lot of it was, they thought it was too commercialized once again. So not a lot of Maple-y stuff, you know, windows by Anderson, not going to pick on them. It just was, you know, what did that really have to do with the Maple Fest? But the push this year is we have Pam Atwood. She's a local resident. She's the president of the Wyndham Chamber of Commerce, so she's going to be heavily involved along with Diane Nadyu, who is the Chamber of Commerce. But the push is to try to get more Hebron civic school, even town departments involved. Last year, just a quick Maple Fest 2019 at 109 vendors, there was the two sugar houses, which you know, five library groups, 23 vendors, 33 non-food vendors. Where's the town statistic? I could go through this, but it wasn't a lot of town participation. Thirty-seven were Hebron-based businesses and organizations. So we're looking to enhance that, you know, there was businesses that in the past participated that don't. Once again, there was a lot more sugar houses that participated, and no, because they're just gone to the wayside. But it's a good event for our community. It's to promote the businesses within. It's the walkability. It's to showcase our center of our town. So they want to put an earlier push on to try to get, you know, like St. Peter's to join in. We had, of course, the Lions at the Pancake Breakfast, and the artists, we're going to have those again. The Tractor Parade, I guess, is still part of that.
It's fun.
Yep. So they'll come and talk to us again and have an organizational meeting, but they're hoping to get more town nonprofits, maybe the churches, booster groups from the schools, you know, like they used to. Because she's trying to combat the complaints, not complaints, but just criticism at the end of the meeting or the end of the festival that, you know, it's not really Hebron-y. It's lost its Hebron appeal. So we're going to try to do that the best we can. I mean, it's more in one area, it's had all the way up and down the center of town, and that was due to costs and police and things. It wasn't to any fault of the Wyndham Chamber. They're trying to keep the thing alive. And I think a lot of people do come to it as long as the weather's good.
I find it being very well-supported by outside peoples. There have been comments that there is a lot of non-Mapple-type events that go on. And, you know, the simple answer there is call the Maple Festival bizarre. You know, change the name a little bit. It's a great time. It's good for the community. It gets a lot of people in town. I would hate to see it go by the wayside, but that being so... There has been friction with, you know, different groups in town who don't feel they should have to pay, or don't feel this, or don't feel that, and just want to do what they want to do without wanting to bear any of the shared responsibilities for the police protection and all the other stuff. You know, it still costs money to put this type of event on. And I think part of it would be to sell the other groups on why it's important to become a part of it and show them what the expense is and to show why there is a B structure in the first place.
And I think having Pam as a local person to try to promote that is going to be a little bit, she has a little bit different approach than Diane does. I think that'll help. But it's, once again, it's an economic development driver, brings people to your town, and maybe the benefit isn't right there at that point in time, but they'll see things and maybe want to come back or do something different. Only thing I can like point to is you go up to Keene, New Hampshire, where they have the pumpkin thing, and all the businesses support it and they all benefit by it. You go to Lake George, New York, and they shut the village down for two or three days, and all the businesses flourish because they work together, and it just takes off, and the community benefits by it. So it's like John said, you know, that's, you got to brand it or come up with some sort of, you know, scheme of how to try to sell your town, and I think he's on to something with that. And you got to get the businesses to buy in because the end result will benefit them. And it's going to benefit Fenigans. Fenigans, I'm not singling them out. Ace Hardware, if everybody were to help her with a participation fee of the, whatever it is, that's going to help the success of the event itself, and they're going to benefit by that. It's not just going to the wayside.
Two comments. Haven't been there every day for 14 years, every Maple Fest, freezing, working. A comment that's been made for years is there's not enough there. So now that there's more there, I think more people have come, and I haven't heard that comment as much. People would walk by there and go, where is it? But now that they go into the library and there's more in the back and things set up, that's good. If we could create some kind of schedule, I get a lot of complaints about this. If you're a nonprofit, maybe we have a different fee for you. I'm just throwing that out there to get some people back involved again who are a little disgruntled at this point.
Well, that, we also had some issues with vendors that were set up at one of the off-site facilities. We couldn't get into the facility. The people with the keys never showed up.
Is that Ram? Where was that?
Yes.
I have the key now, so we get in there.
So my impression of Maple Fest last year, you know, I thought it was really successful, and I think it's branded now that people are coming out in the winter. This is like their first event. They're just, they want to get somewhere. I know when we had little kids, Maple Fest was pretty lame. It was a long time ago. But we went. It was good. So I would suggest, and I know people disagree with me, but if we delayed it two weeks or one week so that it was a little bit warmer, it was always really cold.
It was so cold.
But people say, what they say is, well, that's not when the sap runs. And I'm like, well, there's only one Maple guy that's even involved now. So we have this brand called the Maple Fest, which we can sell Maple products, but it's too cold. So why don't we delay it two weeks? We already have these people coming.
I'm with you. You put the maple syrup in a container and you sell it. It doesn't matter when it comes out of the tree.
Exactly.
I would have disagreed with you back in the day when you had all the sugar houses that were making sure.
Right, right.
Now, they can still go through the process, and a lot of times they do, especially if it's a bad run. They'll go through, they'll boil water, the blah blah. They'll go through a whole process. But by postponing it, I don't think it's going to hurt. And like you're saying, maybe a little bit warmer, which doesn't hurt. And you will still have Maple products.
It's not up to me. It's up to get the sugar houses to buy in tonight. That's who drove, John's right. That's who drove that, as the sugar houses are saying. We pushed it back two weeks already from the original date. We moved it back. It's because it's the same week as St. Patrick's.
There's a couple of years they didn't have maple syrup, and it was bought from other places to be sold, and there was that whole controversy. So, you know, how can two people, two businesses drive the whole thing?
Well, back in the day, it was...
Several.
Buy the sugar houses, sell them well, and Craig Sears and Ray Pierce and, you know, and I apologize for having one of them leaving out. It was just, it was a...
Wayne Palmer.
Yeah.
So what are we really trying to do? Maybe it is time for a change in branding. Maybe it is time for a change in what we think of it to draw more attention, to change the way people perceive it. And so maybe it's even Spring Festival or something. It's supposed to be... And so maybe it's, you know, even Spring Festival or something, it's supposed to be valuable. Maybe it's time if we thought to think about that. Well, we wouldn't exclude the Maple House or two that still exist, but unless you're the Maple House or a few other people, you don't, I don't know when the sap runs, I have no idea. They should have waited.
Exactly.
And I've been here for 20 years, and I've been in the Maple Houses. They could tell me it runs in September. So that's not to disparage them, but the point is, it wouldn't necessarily lose any traction or any interest.
Right.
At all. And we're trying to gather the businesses that have lost interest. Maybe we have to rebrand it and do something different. To simply tell them, "Please come out, it helps the community." Well, every other week, someone's knocking on our door asking for donations or whatever, right? And that's, I saw my kids all the years, all the same businesses, asking for the same stuff, week in, week out. So we have to appeal to them differently. So maybe it is time for some kind of branding change, so to speak, without excluding, but if you can do it anymore. So I'm interested in more of that dialogue.
We're working with them. Just a little bit of clarification, it's not a town-run event. They run it, we promote it with them and try to, because it's trying to assist the town businesses and showcase our town. But it's not actually a town-run event.
So when we have...
We could sit in...
...a voice of saying...
Absolutely.
Do you support it and get the traction? Can we think about some other options?
Absolutely. I don't, without being combative, I don't know if we have enough time to do this year.
I agree, we don't.
I think, I think we try to do that every year. We keep getting pushed back in the same thing. Maybe it's time to, maybe if we had more of a role in it, because we really don't, other than we supply our police and they take out a permit to use our library and the parking lots.
And the fire police, too, and everything.
Yeah, they, yeah, they pay for that.
I would be more than willing to assist with this.
Yeah, because it's, the bottom line is, I can only give you the facts. It's coming close to the 30th year. And I think the Wyndham Chamber, I don't wanna make them out to be the bad guys. I think they jumped on board at no profit for them, is to try to keep this thing running. Because quite frankly, what happened was the existing, for the Maple Houses, the committee, just through attrition, lost people, and they couldn't do it anymore. So we kinda have to work with them, but at the same time, it doesn't mean they gotta be open to suggestions to make it better, too.
As I said, I will volunteer myself to be...
My God, I appreciate it. And I'm stepping up this year as well to be more involved, and Pam has. So I think that should be a little bit better, a hometown push, I hope. Yeah.
Change the weather.
I was prone.
Okay. Ready to move on, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, item 7C, next on the agenda, is approve a job description for the wetlands agent and land use assistant. So there was quite a bit of information in your packet. I'm not sure if everybody had a chance to kinda go through that. But Mike has so kindly agreed to stay here, seeing he's, he's in charge. That falls underneath his direction in the land use department. So attaches a draft job description for the part-time position of wetlands agent and land use assistant. This is with the resignation of John Sodderberg, 29, almost 30 years in this position, and then 20 as our resident trooper. So a total of 50 years serving this community. Who has served wetlands since 1989. A review was conducted on the position and other duties in the planning and development department, and a rework of the job description and the assignment is being proposed. Also attaches a memo from Michael Leary outlining the proposal. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike, and then we'll open it up to questions, if that's okay, to the board.
Well, just to recap maybe a little bit. Thank you. As Andy mentioned, John Sodderberg's worked with the town for just, you know, about 50 years, one way or another, as a resident state trooper or as the wetland agent. 30 years as the wetland agent. And I was pretty lucky to have him. He retired as a state trooper, so he really didn't need benefits. Interested in the subject matter. The position was being created at the same time he was retiring. So he moved into that position, and he's still there. He was there when I started 25 years ago. Finally said, "I'm gonna retire a second time," and that's the end of it. So my concern, actually, I've been concerned for several years now, that when John did decide to step down, that we do wanna fill that position with someone who is professional, who's trained, with some knowledge of soils and science. And as the, that position got a little away over the years, from a half-time position down to 15 hours, no benefits. And that's gonna be a very tough position to fill. We kinda get a nice opportunity with John 30 years ago. Unlike we were gonna hit gold twice and find someone that doesn't need benefits and plan to work 15 hours a week. So we looked internally at the department, Hortonize, Department of Planning and Development, which is the building official, planning, we support the Chatham Health District there, sort of the health and sanitary area, town engineer reports there, I supervise him, of course, as a consultant, and economic development. And of course, the building official slash fire marshal slash zoning enforcement officer, who's Randy Blais, and one of the things that's really obvious to me, anyway, I think the town manager agrees, is that one of the things that really suffers with that building official position is the zoning enforcement officer. Not that we wanna be heavy-handed in zoning enforcement, steering everyone's backyard, but there are issues that need to be addressed, and people that need to be talked to, and needs of the regulations, and do it a friendly way, but in a way that enforces the town codes and regulations. And when you have someone who's, you know, looking at 500-plus billing permits a year, that all need to be, that all need to be inspected, some of them four, five, six, seven times if it's a brand-new home. Also dealing as a fire marshal, who needs to inspect all the businesses in town, all the apartments in town. Those take priority. There's quite a bit of liability if those types of inspections aren't done properly by the town. So zoning enforcement sort of gets as the, you know, when he gets to it. And one of the things that I thought that this position could just also involve a few other duties, and one of them was to assist the zoning enforcement officer in that function. This is approved, Randy would simply be the zoning enforcement officer, but this assistant would do the field work, do the public contact, answer the questions, get out there and do the discussions with the residents when that's needed, and then let the zoning enforcement officer in, do the official orders of paperwork. But that's, that's a need, that's there right now. I think it could be filled by this position, and by decreasing the hours, as I've suggested, I think it would give us a better opportunity to hire somebody that is professionally qualified to step into this.
That's only six and three-quarter hours more than John.
It's not a lot.
No.
It's not a lot, but it's, you know, it's, you can have three full days. It's someone who, you know, there's a lot of different, there's a lot of towns that hire part-time zoning enforcement officers, or wetland enforcement officers, or economic development coordinators. You know, so someone might be able to patch something together, or he's doing some consulting, could also do this three days. But if you wanna look down to three and a half days a week, which is what John does now, it's, you know, it's, that's gonna be tough to fill.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't think it'd be, I don't think it's gonna be as productive for the town or for the department. I think this could enhance the operation in the land use.
Do you need full-time, and you can't afford it?
That's what I'm told, you can't afford it, full-time. I think this would be a step in the right direction. At least get another two, three, four days a week.
The need fluctuates. The statute.
Because, like you said, when I read through this and driving around town, the zoning part is not being enforced, because nobody, nobody's bothered them when they just don't have enough hours to do it.
I was gonna say, the past three building inspectors, I've had many conversations with, you know, both on-off inspections or whatever. The zoning compliance takes such a huge amount of time. You just don't go in, take a look at the plumbing, electrical, everything's okay, check off the box and go. It's doing the investigation, it's doing the letter-writing, it's doing all of the actions of, you know, basically, as a code enforcement officer, you have to have skills of a police officer. You know, you have to be able to write up what the violations are in legal terms. It's not an easy job, and, you know, quite literally, I am all for having someone else working and assisting on this zoning area. It's major. The time right now that it takes, Randy doesn't have, Joe Summers didn't have it before him, officer didn't have it before him. It's always been a problem, you know, because you can spend so much time in just one case.
You bring up a great point, because it's not, if we just said, "Okay, there's a problem, send a formal enforcement order out." It's not the right way to handle it. It's a lot of hand-holding, it's a lot of...
Yeah.
It's a lot of explanation. And what we try to do is get people to, without a formal enforcement order, to come back and get the compliance. I think it's a kind of your general way to do it. It's, it doesn't do it as quickly, maybe, as just sending an order out, but I think it's the right way to assist.
And Randy's...
And it takes time. It does take some more time.
Good point. And Randy's fantastic at that, so hopefully we can get another person who exercises the same diplomacy and being able to work with people.
Randy does a good job.
He does. Hey, we need to discuss this anymore? Seems like we're all in favor of this.
Yeah. As I say, I just... Yeah, I read through the whole thing, and I'm satisfied. My thing, as I say, is to get people, or hopefully, with the pool of applicants, we'll have somebody that's got not only the wetlands experience, but some of the enforcement experience, you know, how to write up the proper languaged verbiage where it does come to zoning compliance. We do have areas, I think, that one of our board members here can say that they haven't had somebody walk up, "How come this person's got this?" Or, "How come that's there?" You know, "Where's the enforcement?" It's something like, "Ah, yeah, we're working on it."
I'm in favor of this.
Me, too.
I just said, like, just one more, just an observation of the, you know, it's not, not my party, but it's something important. If the low range of the, of your, just the salad, you say that full-time job, you hired someone at the low end of the range that you presented in your document. Is that more attractive, because then the relative hourly cost is actually a lot less than the whole thing? And it might attract a different level of applicants who say, "Listen, I need to make that 10 grand more a year to have, and have it be a full-time job. I can't, but I don't have the ability to have a part-time job." And with that extra money, the attract a different pool of candidates and allow us to gather more value. I don't know if we can afford it, but it just seems like the relative cost, if someone was able to be hired at the low end of the range that you presented, the difference between $41,587 and $53,000, for about 40% more in actual work output for a relatively small additional cost.
Plus, you'd have to give them medical and benefits.
Yeah, because they get any benefits. I'm just, is that, am I not reading that correctly? In terms of, we're taking short money, and we get a whole bunch of different clients, a whole bunch of different applicants.
You would definitely get a lot of applicants, it's a tough question, good question. So, you know, a lot of this comes down to money. This is the approach we were directed to pursue, and so that's what the proposal is. At least get it up to a reasonable number of hours.
Yeah, it was just not sufficient. It seemed pretty important, it seemed like it was more than work, and it seemed that relatively, we get a lot more money, we get a lot more value out of it, and maybe, again, thinking of folks that might apply that wouldn't otherwise have presented themselves.
Yeah, one of the approaches, too, is we could, you know, go this path, see, put it out there, see what pool of applicants are, or not. We feel we've really hit a, a rise, a hundred dead end in back end of the conversation. I thought this was a, yeah, an efficient way to do it.
You did a nice job of providing that, I appreciate it.
And again, and this is the thing we go through, and you remember even, you know, for the board of finance, you know, everything still boils down to what are the taxpayers' goal with that? And, you know, it would be nice to be able to pay people top dollar, and there's a lot of things that are, that are nice. We just don't have the resources to do it. So then we have to try to do what we can with what we have available resources. And every year, we beat ourselves up over what we can do with the available pool of money we have, and we still have to get a budget that the voters will pass.
It's gonna seem to be like a need-to-have as opposed to a nice-to-have. It's like the budget process is squeezing on a balloon right here. You know, "Okay, thanks for the money," but then... That's how the budget process works. Like, "Wait, you can have a 10 grand, but you gotta give up the 10 grand." I get, I'll go to work, and we're holding for a long time. But just, I'm hearing a need-to-have here, that I don't wanna short ourselves and the community for what would be relatively speaking, a small amount of money, if it's as important as I can mean that it is. I don't have my heart open to what you intend, so, and, but that's just an observation, that I don't wanna retweet it, you know. At least not explore that, even though it does cost.
Yeah. Of course, that money, that's...
It's about 20, 22, 25.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, so I've been checking on that, that's what it was.
You know, I know, right?
We just went through this with the school resource officer, and we couldn't get a part-time guy. So maybe Andy wants to respond to the recklessness of doing either, trying one, and then maybe the other?
Well, first off, the town's been very fortunate with, as Mike stated, with John. We've filled that position, but wetlands agent is required by state statute. John's did that, and he also did other tasks when things were slow, and helped out in the land use office. So I think the town already benefited for a lot of years. What, I think some of the selectmen have already been involved, and if not all of you, as Denny stated, you get approached, as I do every day, saying, "How come you're not enforcing the zoning regulations?" I know Mike gets it. Not that I'm blowing my horn, but my office and staff spend a lot of time trying to assist in that area, too. I was gonna report later on in my town manager's report, but I think it'll appease everybody now that I mediated the deal to get the Klaus Larson signs taken down. They should be done. That took a lot of time. I had to get the two parties in a room.
You did a good job.
I had to facilitate that, and, but that took some tact and not pressuring either one side or the other, because it really wasn't the town's place. But as selectmen, and you're probably gonna see in the next couple of weeks, there's some people out there that are frustrated with us, saying we're not enforcing it or giving favoritism. And we have some new members on the board, Peter, you being one of them, is, it's always been the approach of the governing body that as long as we're making progress with the individual, we feel that we're getting somewhere. I don't think we're in the business of pushing people out of their houses or a financial burden if they don't have the money to remove a structure. I think we work well with people, but that's not fast enough for some. And I think you might start getting some correspondence to that. I know we have. So Mike's been hearing it, my staff and myself have been hearing it, I know some of the selectmen are hearing it. So we go with other towns, a lot of bases we use is the population and sizes, and we look at all the towns in that bracket and see what they do or what they have, knowing we have budget constraints, and we're trying to keep it mill rate flat, or if not, decrease it. This is our proposal to enhance that. But let's be honest, you got a fire marshal that's part-time, you got a building inspector that's part-time, and you got a zoning enforcement officer that's part-time. So what's going on is you have your residents really starting to raise up where they want a blight ordinance. So this is a step prior to that. A blight ordinance, you're gonna have to hire somebody full-time to manage that. And then your legal fees are gonna double, because the only way to enforce a blight ordinance is take them to court. So we feel that this is the first approach to enhance something that we're feeling the need for in town. We're following the guidelines of CCM or KERMA, insurance companies. What do other towns our size do, what roughly is the budget for that? So I think this is a good proposal, and I think, working on the selectmen's behalf, this is showing, hopefully, some of these people that we're getting serious about stepping it up. And that's all I can say to that. I mean, there's a lot of areas.
So does the wetlands agent have to work 15 hours at wetlands?
I don't think there's a criteria in the statute how many hours he works, it's just that we have to have one. I don't think that's...
The question was, does he have to work all those hours at wetlands?
No.
I mean, he does, oh, jobs in his office. Whatever I've told John to do, he's done it with a smile on his face. He's more than a wetland agent, he's always been more than a wetland agent, he's really like an assistant planner.
Right.
He does an awful lot of research for everybody, the building official, for myself, um, and does erosion and sediment control inspections way beyond what a wetland agent would do.
Yeah.
I mean, not just normal construction sites. So he has a much broader range of duties day to day than just
Yeah, okay. I was just, yeah, I, I just don't want anybody to, I, I don't know what he does, but I do know that to identify wetlands, it's not, I mean, it's a hydroxide ban now, basically, in Connecticut. But if he's doing other stuff and he can do other stuff, that's, that's fantastic. I mean, that, that would, that would, maybe the title, well, I guess he has to do that.
Yeah.
It's about the state.
Right, there you go.
But that's why we're proposing it the way we did, just for that reason.
But I think the structure that's in the land use department, Board and House, it lends it to everybody, which is in to help everybody else. Even, you know, Steve from the health district, the building official, myself and John, I mean, we're not just in silence.
Does he do some subject too?
No, that's
Easily, yeah.
But, but when, when John started, he was doing sewer inspections.
Really?
Your sewer system was getting better. Now that was the time he started. Does an awful lot of other
Okay. Um, move along. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the job description for the wetland agent, land use assistant as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, so be it.
Thank you.
Ah.
Thank you as well. Next is a formality, it's, it's, we, this has been on and off the agenda, I think Donna can help me out for six or several months. We were just trying to get them to have the right date and the right town manager on it. I signed it for the last three years for Bonnie Tharian, but we finally stuck to our guns. Huh? So I finally got it to, yeah, it took, it was a monumental task, but, so we've already, we're already entered into this contract? This is just a formal signing of it, so.
Um.
If you look at the date, July one, two thousand nineteen.
Uh, proposed resolution, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Being resolved by the Hebron Board of Selectmen to approve the contract between the State of Connecticut, Department of Emergency Services, and Public Protection Division of State Police and the Town of Hebron for services of one resident state trooper for the contract period July first, two thousand nineteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, and authorize Andrew J. Turney, Town Manager, to sign any necessary contract documents. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, so you're going to say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions, so be it.
Okay. Next is item seventy. Consider abatement to Town Code Chapter one fifty-eight, Bazaars and Raffles, Section one fifty-eight dash three, permit fees. If you lift the board or for the new members of the board, then remember the state delegated this responsibility over to the towns not that long ago. And in doing so, we, we took the suggested or we changed the amount. Um, and now that we've done it for a little while, we're getting a little bit of a pushback, and I don't blame them, um, some of these nonprofits for a small raffle to just try to benefit, whether it be a school association or the historic society. Um, it, it's just, it's an expense sometimes with to gobble up their whole profit or at least a portion of it, so. Uh, we've heard enough people, the school of education, uh, people had asked, Mrs. Blinn specifically, and then most recently, a few people have reached out to Donna, because Donna's the one that administers these permits, um, voicing their, uh, their displeasure with the, the fee on, on the type of raffle they're running and the cost. I, I, I kind of agree with it. We did it when we wanted to reluctantly take it over from the state, but now that we have it, I think we should adjust it to be more in line with um the actual raffles that they're running. It's, it's kind of hurting them.
I totally agree.
Totally agree.
I was around when the prices went up and I didn't like it then, and I, I just totally agree.
What's the, what's the, what's the expense? I mean, or is this just a revenue source?
It's not, it's not really a re- it's a regulatory thing that, uh, that they have to comply with. And the state used to do it for years, and then last year, I think, was it last year, they turned it over to the
Two years ago.
Two years to the town and um Basically, we, we just pretty much process it, and we don't really do a lot of enforcement because of the type of raffle that it is, but
We owe the state money? When we, when we collect these fees, do we keep the fee?
Yeah.
Keep the fee?
Yeah, it's just, yeah, we keep it now.
And before, we didn't keep it?
We did get it.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Now we keep the whole thing from ministry, ministry, and is that what kind of time is required? A couple minutes apart, or is it like time considered a week?
It's not hours, it's not hours. It depends how well prepared, prepared they are, and I spend time, you know, going over the permit for them. But it's, you know, probably a half an hour.
I think it's longer to convince them that they need one than it is to actually do the permit.
That's a good question.
We do, how many should we do, or how many
Yeah, so that's
So we probably do four or four to six a year. Like Grand, Grand Music Studios, they do that for their concerts, but um, we also process the bingo. So the mom's club does their maybe one bad bingo, and that takes a little bit of time to put that off together. But there are, there are, you know, probably half a dozen, so we have to, there are quite a few people running bizarre raffles without
And why do you think they say this, we won't have any profit?
Although, you know, I read that, and I don't, I don't, I don't agree with that. I think you're either honest or you're not, so you're, no, really, you depend if you're not, so you can afford fifty, but you can't afford sixty. I think those people, we would just get less money. I think, because I couldn't, if I can't, I owe the fee, so I owe the fee.
Some of them, some of them truly didn't believe
Yeah.
that what they, what they're doing, like the teacup raffle.
Right.
They think, oh, that's a teacup raffle, it's not a raffle. It's still a game of chance. So my advice to them is then do a silent option. That's not a game of chance, and it doesn't cost you anything. But if you're gonna do a teacup raffle, that is a game of chance, and you need a permit.
But I don't think lowering the fees is gonna cost somebody all of a sudden, get a conscience, and say, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pay the fee now, but it's a little bit less. Either they, they misunderstand us, that's understandable, that's totally different. But it, I think lowering the fee, and now we're gonna make some people honest about paying, I think that's, I don't believe that. But my, my thinking on this is, it's a handful, it's the minimal amount we can charge and, and have it at least equate to the time spent. Because it's not really the money maker, it's four or five.
I totally agree.
It's not a money maker.
No, it's not money maker at all.
So can we lower the money point, you get, and say, listen, this would be the minimum of every time you touch one, you obviously, time is valuable, so we didn't pass. But whatever that lowest amount is, it's to encourage people to, you know, to not.
This is the sort of thing that, that, you know, the irritation isn't worth the expense, and it's also, my response would be, the government's just getting, getting more money, you know, for, for, for what? Nothing, really. So like, as Peter said, I agree with him, you should do it to minimize.
And it's difficult when you're out in the community, and, you know, you're attending these events, and you see these raffles that are being conducted without a permit, and I go in and I'll buy my tickets and then say, please, next time, get the permit. But um
Explain under class three, the twenty dollars per day or ten dollars per day, is this a decision you were looking for us to make?
Yeah, it's an option, giving you an option.
Right. That the twenty dollars per day is what we, um, what we used to charge.
Okay.
Before the new regulations went into effect. But a suggestion is, maybe it's ten dollars a day. Is that, is, the class three is the bizarre
Yeah, churches and
that's the teacup raffle. So for like a two-day church fair.
Do we make like less than a thousand dollars from this year?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So what's the minimum we could do? Can we do five dollars?
Well, we, we made it, so we have to have one for the state departments, and we therefore have to process it. And therefore, what is the lowest fee we can do to process it? And it would seem, so we need it as ten dollars a day, so at least people have it the same fee for any complex, we don't, I don't even, I don't even know what other classes we're for.
That was my question.
Seven classes?
Okay, um, let's, let's work this out. Um. Move the Hebron, well, we have to do this in a public hearing, okay? Okay.
I'll do ten dollars.
I would say, um, I make a motion that we move to public hearing the proposed permit fee schedule uh, as suggested at the January second, two thousand twenty Board of Selectmen's meeting, with the exception that class three, uh, the proposed permit fee be ten dollars per day. And that we move this proposal to public hearing, uh, for the Thursday, January sixteenth, two thousand twenty.
Well, there's, there's a whole motion to Senate, a public hearing.
Yeah, but we have to have the amounts.
Do we have to have the amounts, or do we have to have it, can we go to public hearing to present a revised fee schedule?
I think Danny's first, first, you can make your almost, which he did, to change the amounts, what you're recommending, and then I would do a second motion that's listed in the packet.
Right, so.
When we get down to class six, can we make that seventy-five?
Sure.
And then leave class seven at a hundred?
I don't know.
Can we just make them all ten dollars?
Just make them all ten dollars?
Yeah, I agree with that. Let's make them all ten dollars.
It's not a money, it's not designed to make money.
So, I mean, people would appreciate that. I mean, that's a, that's a
It's a small, little thing to do.
Yeah.
What is class seven?
We have no idea.
Class seven allows the aberration of a raffle, which shall be consummated within fifteen months of the granting of the permit, shall allow no more than twelve prize drawing, uh, separate days, and the aggregate value of the prizes, the prize offered shall not be more than fifty thousand dollars. I don't think we've ever issued a class seven.
Yes, it's a larger prize.
Have I, um?
Are these always for, for charity, for, for something good?
I don't know, I think
Well, typically, you know, the entity, uh, no, typically the entity will then keep some of the money, so they raffle off the trip, and then I just got my workdays on, took twenty dollars from you. They're on, they're giving away a trip, and then they, and they think they can raise three thousand dollars for their kids to go on a trip to offset their expense to go to this class trip to France or something. So after those prizes, after
Oh.
So there is, they are making a profit. So it's back to, if it's a half hour of your time, what is your time worth? That should be the job, our cost. We have to at least break even. Break even is we have town employee that's making X amount of dollars an hour, and it's a half hour per, on average, if that's right, that should be the cost. Because if not, we're actually losing money by you working on something for thirty minutes and you paid for it, if you worked out for that. So maybe that's something to think about, or maybe we'll beat this to death, but it seems like it should correlate to at least the lowest possible cost, which would be offset the expense. And if it's a half hour of time, that's the expense.
Do we still wanna make it ten dollars a day, or do we wanna make it twenty dollars a day for all of them?
Well, that's back to, the ten dollars wouldn't be equating to offset the expense.
Makes more than twenty dollars.
If I can make a suggestion.
If it's lower, she's not arguing with them about it.
Right. Well, we don't, we don't issue a lot of those anyways, and those, if we did, we may have to spend more time in enforcement.
Right.
So I, I mean, if, if we were
There are some, like, if somebody came in for a couch and raffle, and we, we have had that for years, those are very I mean, you cannot believe the things you need to do for that type of raffle. So there is some, some
Yeah, require more work than others.
And we don't know what will be
The request to us is the reason we brought it back to you guys was mostly in the areas and the lower.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, you know, I don't think we'd be upsetting too much, or, or if we're too out of line with the other ones, seeing we don't
I
Most frequently issued permit right now is the class three bizarre. And so, and that was the one, you know, sixty dollars a day for a two-day event. If they have, you know, like, that's a lot of money.
So what does it mean, twenty dollars per day or ten dollars per day?
We have a choice.
Gave you an option.
So we're just, I, you know, I, I'm offering for the ten dollars a day.
Yeah.
The twenty is what we charged before the state changed it.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
You know, the upper ones, as I say, if you're, you're having a, a raffle, you're gonna make fifty or a hundred thousand dollars, you can spend a hundred bucks. Yeah, but if you're making that kind of potential money, you know, a hundred dollars is cheap at that
Well, you gotta look at the other side of the raffle too. If you get into that, like you said, class seven at fifty thousand dollars, and then all of a sudden there's an issue, we gotta get involved in that, and there's an expense.
Yeah.
You know, he had his hold his own number.
I don't want to change class three to ten dollars.
Okay, yeah. Okay. So, I believe that's my original
Move to public hearing the proposed permit fee schedule as suggested at the January second, twenty twenty Board of Selectmen meeting, with the exception that class three be ten dollars a day, and that plus we will provide a plan of various sixteen companies.
Sounds good.
Okay.
We don't need to do that again. That was a good one, Dan.
Okay. All in favor, sort of, is, sing like I'm saying, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. So now we have our permit fee scheduled, now that we have to do another motion
I would, yep.
Set the actual public hearing.
Yep. So now you set the fee schedules to move it, just now you just read the one in the packet if you're comfortable with it.
Okay. Now make a motion that we, that the Hebron Board of Selectmen scheduling public hearing for Thursday, January sixteenth, two thousand twenty, at seven fifteen P M. at the Hebron Town Office Building, to receive public comment on the proposed amendment to the Town Code Chapter one fifty-eight, Bazaars and Raffles, Section one fifty-eight dash three, permit fees. And you just pick on that. All in favor, so you're going to be saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Okay.
All right, next on the agenda under seven F is review of the Town of Hebron Committee slash Commissions.
I'd like to make a start.
Okay.
Gathering information start.
Okay.
Um, it's gonna be a monumental task, it's gonna take us a long time, but we're going to do it diligently and carefully.
Yeah.
What I would suggest is that we pick out a couple to start with, have Donna get that information for us, and then it gets disseminated to us, and we can all do our homework, and then discuss that as well. So we could start with one or two and see how long it takes, or somebody we know will be fast. So you could pick my building commissioner tonight, and um
Which, which one did you pick?
Public Building Committee.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
And that, that'll probably take us a little while, so.
I have one to add.
Oh, okay.
Is the Veterans Advisory.
Yes.
Veterans Advisory.
So I don't know how long it will take your office to gather the, all the information on Public Building Committee, but um, I would like to see that gets out to us. And then we do it. What do you think, John?
Good.
Yeah, I know, I was actually talking, uh, the Hebron Store Properties issue, and they actually decided to also do an internal audit on what their charges, so.
We'll get that information too when we get to that.
Yep.
Yep. Well, again, it's, they started looking at what all their responsibilities are, and they're starting to review whether or not they've actually met somebody.
That's, we do that ACLB that, um, yeah, the library We do that A C L B that, um, yeah, the Library Board Association that I'm president of. We do that, it's, it's an internal look at yourself. Are we doing our task?
Okay.
So are we adding that public building committee review for the next agenda?
How fast can we get us the? Well, if my colleagues all agree, if we can get it soon enough that everyone can review it, then we can add it on to next time.
Yeah.
Is the board in consensus for that?
Is that okay with everybody?
Nobody's gonna know.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure, because then I gotta deal with the building committee and everybody else. So I want, I want a direction from the, the board, the governing board.
Do you think we'll be ready for the building committee?
Well, we will have the information that we will then be able to digest.
Right.
Yeah.
We may not see the building committee and.
And I'm not inviting, I'm not suggesting to invite them.
No.
What you gotta do is you gotta work through me. You gotta task me to get the information through the employees that work for Town Hall. If we don't have it, then we'll let you know in your packet, it'll be abstract, then we'll need more time. But I wasn't insinuating to notify them. But if this comes up or in public, and I said, I've been commissioned by the whole board.
Right.
To go through all these committees, the first one they picked was the, uh, the Public Building Committee. I just wanted to be clean. I wasn't looking to alert them or.
We don't want, want them until we digest.
Right.
Exactly. No, I, I wasn't suggesting otherwise.
There's questions.
It's a little late, John. Back backwards.
Okay. So next would be draft agenda.
Okay. So we're adding on the sewers to this one, I, I think I've heard.
Right, yes.
Under old business.
Sure.
And I want to invite, um, Kevin Kelly, the, uh.
Yes, please.
W P C Administrator for answers and.
If we're beginning to discuss the town manager's evaluation tonight, should Danny Corrals on the old business next time?
Yep.
And. Excepting, excepting.
Well.
Okay, done? Done, okay.
Ask, or add something potentially, uh, for the finance? Do you have that in front of you? Really, for management.
I don't know, I, I'd have, I'd have to.
We have to turn it on.
See what the timeframe is, I don't know.
Yeah, well, we'll look into the, the timeframe of that when it was posted.
We're out at the end of November, right? So we should be past the thirty-five, we're pretty close to here.
Yeah.
Now.
Yeah.
Like to have someone in place for.
Sure.
Do we have interest?
Yep.
Yeah, I know, I know a couple, yeah.
Yeah, if it's, if it fits in the timeframe, definitely we'll have that information and that would be, I'm assuming next month, but it was all the time.
You have a couple, right, John?
We have a couple, yes.
Next, next thing you're going to do is.
You want it on the sixteenth.
Or January eighth, it would be nice.
On the sixteenth, you will.
I don't.
You'll have, actually, the sixteen would be a target.
There was some that, that date was specifically mentioned, I forget.
It's, it, it gets noticed, I mean, it goes through the whole.
Thirty-five days from the date of publication.
I'm not sure what the date of publication.
No, we'll look that up and get that to you.
That's what I'm saying, that's why I'm a tangent on the agenda, because I don't know what that thirty-five days.
It, it should be, it should be right.
What's the starting point was on the end of November?
Should around that. It seems like.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, good. Good, good reminder, yeah, we'll figure that out.
Yeah.
So we got the sewers, um, do we want to talk Maple Fest again at the next one?
Oh, we'll keep it on the agenda.
And then, um, B O F appointment. Anything else?
That'll be a lot.
Well, it will be, if you have a building committee, that could be a fast course at this point.
Well, we'll see.
Okay. Next would be. Any other new business?
Well, that was, Gail was gonna add that town manager review stuff on.
Yeah, he did, he did.
You covered, that covered it?
We, yeah, we covered it. So. All right, it's that baseball time of year again when we have to evaluate town manager. He, I had Donna print out the forms that we can use in ourselves, as well as the chances we gave to department heads. And I'm assuming this was drawn for the last four or five years. Few years back, I devised the form. And what I want to do now is pass them out to all of you, even you, and see if there's any requirement or change, that any, you know, things might be valuable. And for each individual, let me know if you see something on there. Because at the next board meeting, I propose that we evaluate, we go into the next section to evaluate.
So we're not showing them out, we're just evaluating.
Evaluating.
We're evaluating the evaluation. Okay.
Well, I've walked the way, we've been here for so long.
These are all the same, I believe, I have.
I think you should have both in there.
Okay, the reason I'm saying is you've got a lot of copies.
Yes, you had the department head one, as well as the department one. And the top one for the body.
I think I had one too, so.
You can have a clean copy.
No, I meant to fill that.
Oh. Okay. The only thing I just want to again bring up, not doing under new business, is a reminder that as, as we start getting into budgets and what have you. If you're requesting information from, you know, another quarter commission, it should either go through, you know, chair to chair or, uh. Andy, you know, to department head or whatever. You know, we should not be going straight to, you know, as an example, Elaine for budget. We should be going through Andy. You know, try to keep that chain of control manageable. We've had in the past where we've had a lot of issues where people are just going up to other people and then trying to get information. It's creating issues.
No, I appreciate you bringing it up. I think the, if I can be, boy, I think more of the issue was with finance members versus my Board of Selectmen and this issue. No, no pun intended, Dave. I, I don't recall having too much issue with any of this, like, I know we got some new selectmen that didn't know the protocol, but. I'm glad you brought that up, I didn't prompt that, but it's funny, I just came from a two and a half hour meeting at the Ram Board and it was all about the protocol. So you hit the protocol on the head, that's just protocol, no matter what it is, it's just, that's the way it should be in order everybody gets the same information. At least if I do it, it goes through me, I simulate it to everybody.
That's why I just go with the lines, it's smooth, you know.
Yeah, because that's what Pat was going through at this meeting tonight, that a lot of the stuff was going from her board members to subordinates or contractors or even to some of our employees to get some information and the, and the meeting, the messages were mixed, so.
Yeah.
But I, I haven't had an issue with that, so.
Okay, town manager report.
Okay, under that, um, well, the recent activities, excuse me, it's the holiday season, but we've still kept busy. So we have made an offer, a conditional offer, uh, on an S R O. And because of, um, he's still employed at, at another town, there's some formalities that we have to go to to make sure he's eligible to be the candidate. So we're not releasing the name at this time until we make sure he's, he's signed a letter of, um, uh, commitment and he's shared it with his town. We're gonna try to get some of the, um, processes done that he needs to get done to make sure he's, uh, able to be our S R O and we will release that name as soon as we can. As I stated, we, we mediated the Klaus Larson, uh, signs to come down hopefully by tomorrow. Um, there was a lot of slack from residents in town that didn't like that, but.
Is Ray's come down too, or he gets to keep this up there?
No, he's supposedly gonna take us down.
I wonder why. They were new ones, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that house, trying to let it take its course and as I was getting ready to approach, the new ones went up, so. Uh, tonight we had a meeting with the Ram Facilities Committee, um. On, on the regional project, we, we have Rich, uh, works within agreement with Ram on the field, so we want to make sure we shared that up and everybody was doing what they were supposed to be doing. Before this meeting, the insurance consortium met and the numbers keep going in the right direction, so, um, they're even coming down a little bit more, so we're gonna continue to keep you posted on that all through the budget process, but. It's looking better than I thought it would at this point in time in the game, so it's good news. That's really good news. And that's good news for the schools as well, both schools are involved in that, so that should affect all those budgets in the, in the positive. Uh, we continue to still work with the solar company. We're gonna be giving an update on the library to the building committee and along with the, um, library board on the proposed updates on that project. So we keep, continue to move forward with that. That, what does that mean, next week? Is that next week we're meeting with them, Donna? Okay, the four week after. We're working on the C I P budgets with the department heads and the projects, like, uh, some of the paving and the school parking lots, things of that nature. As I stated, we have a brand new superintendent, so I'm gonna, I'm sure he's getting pulled in a lot of different directions, but we're gonna need, I got a meeting set up with him next week for budgetary purposes and, um, you know, just an introduction type thing and. We'll see how that goes, but I'm gonna have to bring him up to speed on that, so I, I think he's gonna be workable, I believe. His name is Tom, if you haven't met him, the Board of Selectmen met him?
No, no.
Tom Bard. So maybe we'll actually get him to come and introduce himself too. If he's, you know, sooner than later. And then in the packet, under correspondence, if everybody looked through there, we had a letter from the Lions Club and I told them, normally if anybody wants to talk to the town or, or wants something that the Selectmen, normally tell them, put it in a letter and we'll bring it up at a Board of Selectings, so that's what they did. They approached me and they were, they're looking, or they have interest to try to help the town and, um. They wanna possibly do the expense in the project of possibly putting up a community sign on the corner where we put all the signs, like a three-sided thing, more, um, uniformed. You know, because it's really starting to get messy out there and.
Yeah.
It's awful.
Yeah. So they, they've come forward and, and I, I wanted to bring this up to you guys, if you guys as a whole board feel that this is something you would be interested in, I could write back to them, let them know that we discussed it at this meeting. And they would then start to draw some sort of schematics, nothing would happen till it came back to you and planning is over.
I think it's a great idea, I'd double the details. Any sign there, if it goes up, it needs to be legible. You know, for people to read, if you can't read it, what good does it do? You know, a bulletin board, there's no place really for people to stop, so I would really kinda need to know more of what they are actually proposing.
I don't know if you've been through, um, East Hampton, out in front of the I G A, they have like a half octagon where it's three-sided and they have large letters and, um, sports boosters fundraiser or something.
That would be fun.
They would definitely have Play-Ins pitchers.
I mean, now we have a C B D sign up there. It's really tacky.
I had no.
You guys noticed that, huh?
I guess.
It's so tacky.
This would be great.
I think it's very generous of them, I, I just look forward to their.
Okay. So I'll write a letter back to them that they can work with us.
We have this sign up there for nonprofits, what are we gonna do about all the other signs that up there? I mean, the place looks pretty tacky during all that.
C B D sign, we've taken down two times.
Oh, two times.
Putting them back up.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, I think we need more control.
We would, we'd have to regulate it, but right now we don't have anything to put their signs up, so with this, we would have to come up with a set of rules and you guys would have to adopt them and then we could enforce them.
Does that get so tacky up here? And yes, I know my sign was up there.
Well, now, now you're not wor, now you're worried about it after you have.
Yeah, right, now I can say that.
I think it was right next to the C B D sign.
That, that was all I had as far as that goes. The other thing is, in the packet, I just want to bring attention to it, if you didn't see it, is, uh, Rich Colaco hit his fifteen-year milestone with the Town of Hebron.
Yep.
So I always like to, I'll put those in there so you can look at those.
For some reason, I just thought it was a lot more than, I just, I don't know, I was just seeing those in such a picture. It's just hard to believe he's already fifteen years. I mean.
Me too. I get my fifteen years.
I have a question. There was a, a legal notice about, uh, for an R F P for agricultural service for town home properties on Kingwood. I think it's, I think it's for Bobcat Park of, uh, Ram and Preserve.
Both sides, yeah.
Yeah. Do we want to do this? I mean, did we vote on this? Because I don't want, I don't want, I don't, I would prefer that the park be just for people, not, not, not too far.
Not too far?
Yeah.
This is something we've done in the past, that was approved, but I mean, it can change anytime you want. But what they do is, they're hanging the park side and then Ned has corn on the, the opposite side that we're not really.
It generates some revenue, I would be adorable.
It's for, for the, the new park near the town church.
We have multiple parcels we're dealing with.
Okay. And, and across the street for the Horton Park, the new park office too.
Yeah.
It is to get us some free work because we'd have to control the growth anyway, so if they come in and chop it and take it away?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is it helpful?
I, I would, what I would want is for us to encourage actually people to, to use the park instead of it being farmed, because that's not gonna give us a lot of money anyways, but. We, we spent, we just spent six hundred thousand dollars on, on this new park, which is beautiful and it's, could be usable. And people should, we do want people to use it because we just bought it. We should see what they bought and, uh, if it's farmed, um, well, the whole parcel's not farmed, is it?
It spells out what parts are, there's some are, no, that's not the whole parcel, but.
Thirty-two acres. So I, I would imagine thirty, at least thirty, a lot of it's going to be in the Bobcat Park.
What we're, what that's proposing is what was being farmed when the Hortons had it, until we, until we progressed with the plan, we left it that way. But you're the Board of Selectmen, you guys can vote and do whatever you want.
Well, I mean, how, how much money is it?
No, I'm sorry, I'm not making a lot of money, it's just, it's actually maintaining the property so it doesn't grow up and get overgrown, but.
You know, that's one of the farmer's responsibilities, is maintaining the property. Uh, the other thing is, again, a farm requires a certain amount of, of product produced for feeding the livestock and what have you. You know, corn, i.e. silage, is required for the cows for the winter time. So if they can't find properties within which to raise the corn to produce or make the silage out of, they're not gonna be able to have the cows. You know, each cow will sexualize the amount of food a day, the way it is.
It's gonna go away at some point, I mean, whether it's right now or, or a year from now or two, that, that's your option, you can do whatever you guys want.
It's, uh, people, I mean, they really like that park now and it's, the wildlife is really outstanding and.
Yeah, but is, is that in the area that they farm? That's what I'm trying to ask you, Dan. You're not expanding the farmed area.
It'd be the fields that they cut.
John, do they go in the open fields and then when they grow up to three feet or whatever, wouldn't it be better if we had somebody that cut them for free? Because nobody's gonna walk in here and get ticks and, uh.
No, it's far, it's, it's corn.
It's corn, though, so. Okay. So if it wasn't corn, it would be a field and it would still grow and people aren't gonna walk in there, so it would be, and then we'd have to, yeah, we can manage it for free. Yeah. Well, you see wildlife when the turkeys come and eat all the stalks of corn at the end and chopping them down. I don't know, I don't know enough on Andy. Would we be responsible for having to cut it and keeping it under control as a town?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Maybe we'd be better to have somebody do it for free.
Like, like I said, I, I'm not trying to sway anybody. Like, like I said, I, I'm not trying to sway anybody's, just, it's gonna go away at some point. We just, when we acquired it, we carried it over because they already had had an agreement with the Hortons. We're putting it back out there again. If that's something the board doesn't wanna do, we're not, we're not.
Would you not wanna see John, uh, corn, John, and then it could be a hayfield and we could sell it to them for the hay part?
Well, we would, we would, if the town were to mow it, we would just mow it. We wouldn't hang it.
That's taking resources, our resources.
Right.
So let them hang it and take the hay away.
I, I would like to, on, on the, on the Catholic Church side, or whatever you call it, some people call it a park. I, you know, that's, that's already a park, so I, I don't know. I, I'm not for farming it. I'm for the Parks and Rec promoting it as a park and for recreation. Then the other side, I think we should accelerate that too, because it's a beautiful piece of property. We should start getting people into that, into that place so that they're, they're educated, that it's available. Like I said, we bought it, the taxpayers bought it. Let's make it accessible. I mean, even if it's farmed, you probably could accelerate that, right? Accelerate the.
Yeah, they could still go on the, taxpayers could go on the property. I, I don't think the, the farming it would, would, I mean, I wouldn't want people knocking the corn down, but I don't think that would stop people from going in there. You know, it would just be foot traffic. It wouldn't be.
USA is awful for traffic anyway. I would like to table this. I would like to get a piece of, I would like to see exactly how much is what.
We'll, we'll get, we'll get you some pictures.
As compared to what the, uh, you know.
The use, what is used?
That's okay.
With walkers. I, I, I don't know what the total piece of the property is.
Yep.
You know, you say three, two acres of farm.
I've never been out there.
I, I wanna see, I, I, I can't visualize how big the property is to see how big that park that's farmed is as compared to the rest.
We can do an aerial shot of the property and show you what's mettled and what, we'll be able to depict what's being farmed now. What we're proposing.
Yeah.
We have, we'll have that.
Yeah, so, um, so just eventually, this is just an idea, it would be good to get like a citizens committee to start looking at the Horton property. Because nobody uses it like that. I assume that the no trespassing is, doesn't apply to everybody?
We can, we can, that wasn't, I don't think those were put up by the town. That was when they had the, with the tree removal. I think the Hortons had those put up.
So that's just an idea. I'd like to get, I know there are people that are interested, some of the neighbors are interested, the wildlife people are interested, historic properties people, not historic properties, some of the, uh,
The other thing is, I had sent, is that, uh, Rich has hired a forester.
Yeah.
And I would suggest also, we see what that individual suggests for best use management practices.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so I, I, you know, being involved with foresters in the past on large tract properties, it's, it's pretty neat what they can do to increase the, you know, carrying capacity of the piece of property for wildlife. The other side of the coin is, as you increase carrying capacity, you then have a responsibility for managing the wildlife. You know, it's not just a one-way thing. And I've already kinda talked to Rich about some of the wildlife management ideas that may come as you manage the forest. Because it's inclusive. It's not just the one thing.
Is it, you, you're, you're bachelor's or some conservation stuff?
Uh, I actually would have been hired as a conservation officer, except for the fact that rural white rose all-state hiring.
Are you becoming an electrician?
I, I had by electrician, but, uh, yeah, I came out very highly to the task. Only to be given the letter that sounded no more hiring.
All right, so we can just table this.
But our next agenda.
It's what I was, so we can actually get some, some plot, just for an aerial view of what areas were actually off.
We've never been out there.
Okay. The consent agenda. And we're gonna do this separately because I am right now. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen to approve the following consent agenda item, which would be the November twenty-first, two thousand, yeah, the November twenty-first, two thousand nineteen joint special meeting. Anybody have anything on that? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the minutes as posted?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? And then, uh, move the board approve the following consent agenda item, the December fifth, two thousand nineteen regular meeting and we will make our amendments and then it will be as amended.
Under item E, appointment to Open Space Land Acquisition Committee. I don't think we, did we formalize your appointment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, that's my question. My notes didn't say all that.
We did it twice.
We did it twice.
Yes. Because you knew it the first time.
I didn't have it in my notebook.
I feel anointed.
Okay. My, my issue was item seven, that stated Dan Larson asked if during emergency calls. That was not the case. It was, does this, uh, policy apply to the emergency response personnel? In which case it does not. You know, fire EMS was stated, uh, are under different, it's the drug policy thing. It's not during emergency calls. It was to the personnel. During emergency calls, they better not have anything that resists it.
Okay.
I got you.
So. With that amendment.
I, I have one. Don't make a sudden amendment. Just to correct that sound in my ear. I appreciate it. Wow. So, and the board is selected present. K S D R and then with seven B, same thing.
Oh, see, that was, that was. That's okay.
So, uh, a motion to accept the December fifth, two thousand nineteen regular meeting minutes as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? So be it. And then, uh, approve the following tax refunds as listed. All in favor? So then I say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So be it. Okay. This, and then we are down to our liaison reports. Mark?
Well, quickly, since we had A H M, I attend their meetings, their drug task force meetings and, um, Andy and I do a lot to try to support them and make things, make sure things are going in the right direction. Pretty happy with the way things are going. There's nothing of note to report.
Dale?
Okay, I have to leave with your marks here. The Hebron Board of Ed, with our liaison too, is meeting tonight, so obviously I couldn't make it, but, uh, what Andy mentioned earlier, the new superintendent Tommy Fair. And then Z has been hired and he did start today. Douglas Library, on January eighteenth, the library will hold a heart book art program. A local resident will be instructing attendees on the art of folding book pages to make a craft. Anyone interested should, um, pre-register at the library. Storytime will be beginning again on January fourteenth and sixteenth. Tuesdays at the three to six-year-olds and Thursdays at the birth to two. Commission on Aging, um, that was down there today as they were having their New Year's celebration, complete with hats and, uh, noise makers and whatnot, and, um, it was actually about thirty-seven people there, which I thought was quite good. And they are still taking, um, winter heating assistance applications and they're also giving help to people with the new, um, changes in the prescription, drug plans and, and Medicare advantage. And that's it, John. Next.
Okay, uh, Zach and Peter.
Order finance did not meet, so I don't have an uptake there. I did attend Parks and Recreation meeting, which was a pretty lengthy comprehensive meeting that was centered around budget preparation, as well as the new commissioners that I checked tonight and, um, the takeaway from the board that I wanted to present was that the increase in expenses associated with the increase in minimum wage is driving the need for Parks and Rec to look at what they feel is an unreasonable increase in fee. So they'll have to charge eight percent. They're coming back in three and a half percent, probably more likely, uh, for particular, more appropriate. As a result, it feels, I mean, we'll be looking, um, for the, for town effectively in the budget process, we'll be looking for about thirty thousand dollars and some offset. So it's concerned that programs that provide, um, will get to a point where the charges will cause hardship. Those that use those services, you know, to, to, to keep the fee increased reasonable, which then will cause a deficit. So there was a positive discussion about, uh, again, budget process, so more follow-up, you know, budget season, but we're saying we're looking for some sort of assistance, so just something that, uh, is, uh, do with the book.
Okay. Uh, John?
You know, I had a question. I, I have this bright, bright idea, so I'll just bring it up right now, maybe Andy can find out about it. You know, we're not allowed to, to email each other because of FOIA, the FOIA, because it's, somebody said it's a, a, you, you can't.
If you, if you, uh, CC everyone.
Right.
One-on-one is fine. It's when you
Have more than two.
Have more than two people in a conversation.
That's why I asked it. Any comments you have on the valuation forms, you send them individually to me, otherwise we have a no-legal meeting.
Right, so I'm just wondering if, if, if those conversations, if we had, I mean, because if we were able to, to, to email each other and have these conversations in between meetings, if they were included in, if the emails were included in the minutes of the meetings, would that satisfy FOIA? So that's the question. Okay. So, um, because I, I looked it up and it, and it's all over the place.
No, if it's a meeting, if I can, if you want to answer. If it's, well, if it's construed as a meeting, now it has to be posted to public, has a right to attend that, is, is, is the reasoning for that.
All right. Okay, so, uh, with economic development, which was, you know, it was great. It was actually, um, really, really good meeting. Only after I think I offended the chairman in the email, but made it up. My sledgehammer approach. Anyways, I didn't mean to offend him. We are going forward with, um, putting together a pitch for, for Hebron, a slide deck that's not unlike, you know, startups. And they, they've tasked the, um, the consultant to do that. So that'll come back and I'm hoping that what we'll do is we'll get this pitch, this slide deck, we'll put on the website, people will know, we'll be able to to go and look at it so that they'll be able to tell people why Hebron's great. But also, um, we will finally, um, fulfill what was proposed in the marketing study in two thousand thirteen and that is train, you know, a number of economic ambassadors. And that would be part of it. So, and I'm thinking that at some point we have a different, we are Hebron, training for economic ambassadors and, uh, I think that would be not only helpful, but people have told me that they really wanna do that, so it has a lot of, uh, accountability. And then, um, land acquisition, you know, is the best committee. We, uh, we, there's, we have parcels over at Kingie Road, Cat Park and all that, and we're trying to get over to Airline Trail without going on two oh seven, right? So we're looking for parcels there and, uh, so we're very busy, but, uh, thanks.
I missed one, I think.
Okay.
I, I didn't do, uh, Ram V O E.
Okay.
So, um, at the last meeting, the Ram superintendent proposed, um, getting, totally getting rid of shop and construction. The Ram Board gave a lot of pushback on that. Then she, um, proposed changing some specialized teaching and they proposed that. So, um, I, I thought you'd be particularly upset about that, was, I think you should, you know, I have a total say in that. I was informed by Randy that the, due to the new safety, uh, guidelines for schools, we're supposed to have stop-the-bleed kits in there. So I went to, um, the superintendent and we ordered and they're not in this year's budget. We're not getting them to next year. I was thinking maybe we go to the Lions and get the stop-the-bleed kits, because we should have them. And just in California, two kids got shot in one of the school shootings, wandered into the music room. The music teacher put tourniquets on and stopped the bleeding and saved their lives. So to me, when somebody says we'll put that in next year's budget, we'll try to find the money, that's not acceptable to me. I do that every day. It's not acceptable to me. It's ninety-four dollars a kit.
I was gonna say, I can't imagine they, they can't be that horrible.
I went to the, I went over to the fire department today and you guys got a better deal on it, so it's ninety-four dollars a kit, so maybe we go to the Lions and see if that's a good donation. Andy and I, working with, uh, Ram, started an active shooter response team. So there's never been an active shooter training with police in Ram ever till a month ago. And we're gonna do that every month now at a different school. We'll do it at Ram, we'll do it in Columbia, we're gonna do it at Lyman. We have a team which comes, every town contributes to it. I identified some trainings that I'm gonna go to, because I'm gonna be the administrative officer of it and we're gonna use one of the state troopers who's a SWAT team, eighty-second airborne instructor. So we have like fifteen to twenty guys already.
That's fantastic.
So we need, in addition to that, we have to be able to take care of first aid needs as they, we don't have kits there. So that's what's going on over at Ram.
So are elementary schools doing?
Every, elementary schools, believe it or not, are a little farther forward in, in their safety plan than they are at Ram.
Really?
Yeah.
Without having a cop there, minus that.
Yeah. Yeah, well, there's security.
Yeah, and, and actually, Trooper Greenwood has done more, um, shooter trainings and, and, and more staff trainings and we're just, we're starting to get better at that. We have to. There's fourteen hundred kids in there and just me.
Yeah, Tim, to his credit, Tim Mantassos was proactive with the elementary school. On safety. Yeah.
Mark, could you explain a little bit more about what you're proposing about the shop plan?
To, to, to totally disband them, just to get rid of it. They already got rid of foods. And so there's a new, a, a new board there too and, and they think that vocational education and being able to, address the needs of kids who aren't college-bound or, and there's a lot of those kids over there and, and.
Is it any? Every year?
No.
Not everybody's college mature. And that doesn't mean make them any less an individual. Some of the smartest people I know work with their hands and the common sense that can come out of it is just incredible.
Just in your own powers of persuasion, if you know Ram Board members, that, um, I, I don't think anybody really is in favor of getting rid of that program.
You've always had a very comprehensive high school.
Yes.
Program. Meet the needs of all the individual kids, not just the college. A microwave kid wants to college. But not all their friends wanted to go.
I think at least they have the exposure. I guess they're putting all their apples in the bucket, just machining.
Yes, that's the only one left.
Yeah.
But that doesn't have that many.
Well, apparently the state has gotten involved. Well, apparently the state has gotten involved with... They'll buy the equipment, the train and tour machines.
Oh, yeah.
At the expense of all of their trades.
But that's also not for, so there's a great deal of math in that, and that's kind of for the more gifted kid than the kid who's not interested in calculus, physics. He wants to use his hands and learn to be an electrician or a carpenter. One last hurrah, the shop teacher's going to have him build a shed out behind the woods building and learn how to frame and do that. And that's what I think the board wanted that to be the direction of. So they're working on not getting rid of the program.
But that other program, you said Max is out with three, that's the most...
I think there's 13 in and out, but that are actually in the pipeline where you can go to EV or, and I'm not completely, there could be up to 30. I think one kid has been hired out of it so far. You have to be a pretty gifted person to get hired out of that program, it's pretty competitive.
This is a Hebron District Properties, they actually started doing a little bit of self-evaluation when they're talking about, you know, producing all the documentation of what their responsibilities are. And so that's what they're addressing. They've got the, what was the derivative thing that'll be coming up, they're trying to actually find out exactly what the date is for that.
Yeah, I've been waiting to hear that date.
Yeah, so that's what they're trying to do now and they're hoping to hear from that very soon, because spring will be coming pretty quick. That fire department hasn't met, and I think that's, yeah, I can recognize the San River watershed, yeah. That's it.
I'd be very happy if you would.
Thank you, thank you, that was a great meeting.